All right, we'll call this meeting into order. Roll call please. Fernando?
Councilmember Rivas.
Present.
Councilmember Green.
Present.
Councilmember Beltran.
Present.
Vice Mayor McCurvy.
Present.
Mayor Meis.
Present. All right, oral communication. This is an opportunity to address the city council on any matter scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that'd like to come forward? Ah, Mr. Coyne.
There you are. Perfect timing.
Perfect.
Good evening, counsel. Eric Coyne representing Senator Melissa Hurtado. I just want to speak something about something very briefly that is related to item thirty-three on your agenda. Item thirty-three is an EOC update. As you know, the senator or representatives meet regularly with council members, your city administration on current city needs and admet issues. One of the things that was identified talking to your public safety folks, your city manager and staff back then, was the need for an EOC. And so, in twenty-two, twenty-three, the senator carried a budget bill. This is different from member request. This is where you work with the governor to get an actual proposal or a larger program financed in a budget. She was able to get seventy-seven million dollars in there to address public safety needs within her district because of the different needs of the valley. And so, these were the EOC for the city. For Sanger, it was another outdated dispatch center. This is about the time, if I remember, your fire chief and your police chief were saying all the radios were going digital, so all your stuff that you'd bought and you'd been renewing was suddenly going to be obsolete. And so, there were some changes in equipment needs and in the background to make that all work. So, I won't go through the whole list. I did bring a couple of copies of the letter to kind of break down what was in that bill. Lamore Fire, City of Parlier, all these kinds of things. But specifically, you needed an EOC. And so, this is the source of the ten million dollar OES grant that's funding your EOC, if that makes sense. I'm just trying to kind of connect the dots on that, okay? And so, I'd be willing to answer any-- well, as a public comic, can't answer any questions. But I just wanted to offer that background. And so, I'm looking forward especially to the update that city council is going to present on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Is there anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, moving on to closed session. The manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have seven items for closed session. Item one, government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-eight. Confer to the real property negotiators, property APN two-five-five-two-four-zero-zero-one-three. Agency negotiator, Jason Rideon. Negotiating parties, city of Porterville and Danny Henderson. Negotiation terms and price. Item two, government code section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six. Conference of Labor Negotiator. Agency negotiators, Jason Rideon and Yulena Andrade. Employee organizations, Porterville City Employee Association, Porterville Safety Support Unit, and Porterville Police Officer Association. Item three, government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-five. Liability claim, claimant Joseph Funa Pacheco. Agency claim against city of Porterville. Item four, government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-five. Liability claim, claimant Maria Ribero. Agency claim against city of Porterville. Item five, government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-five. Liability claim, claimant Amanda Wingfield. Agency claim against city of Porterville. Government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-three. Conference of Legal Counsel. Anticipate litigation. Significant exposure litigation. Three cases in which facts are not yet known, but it's a plaintiff. Item seven, government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-four. Conference of Legal Counsel. Anticipate litigation. Initiation litigation. Two cases.
All right, thank you. We'll go into closed session and reconvene at six-thirty p.m. Thank you.
All right, we'll reconvene, open session, and report on reportable actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items to report on. Item: Claims of Pacheco, Robledo, and Wingfield on a motion by Vice Mayor McCurvy and seconded by Councilmember Rivas, and a five-zero vote. Those claims were denied. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask you all to stand for a pledge of allegiance led by myself, and then afterwards remain standing for invocation. I would like you guys all to look at our officers tonight. You'll see on their badge they have a black stripe over their badge representing a casualty in law enforcement. An officer out of Lassen County was killed in action, so I'd like to take a moment of silence for him and his family before we have our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Okay, let's do the flag salute. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that'd like to come forward and give an invocation?
Father, we thank you for your goodness. We thank you, Lord, for a city that considers you. We pray, Lord, tonight you might just give special wisdom. We thank you for these men who've given their time, their lives, to make the important decisions regarding our city. Pledge you might just encourage them tonight. Give them the wisdom that they need and challenge them with a vision for what you can do in this city. We pray also, Lord, for this city that you might help each one to respect and to honor these men as they stand and make these difficult decisions. Bless everything that's done tonight, but even more importantly, Lord, might we turn to you in all things, and will give you the praise and the glory for all these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Is there anyone else? Please be seated. All right, we have some presentations, Employee of the Month, and Employee Service Award, City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. First tonight, we have Employee of the Month, Alex Pollak, and I've asked Mr. Moore to provide this recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Alex Pollak grew up in the Strathmore Plainview area where he attended school, but traveled throughout the West Coast and Montana with his family performing migrant agricultural work. He graduated from Strathmore High School prior to attending COS. Alex was employed by the City of Porterville September 1, 2006 as a library assistant after volunteering for months and serving over two years as a temporary worker through Placement Pros. He was promoted to Library Supervisor 1 July 1, 2024. Alex's duties include daily operations of the temporary library, staff scheduling, performance evaluations, automation committee, representative, and jurisdictional system administrator for the Porterville Library as part of the San Joaquin Valley Library System, searching for and importing bibliographic records for the library's catalog, interviewing, hiring, and training new staff, enforcing the library's rules of conduct, handling patron complaints and staff issues, assisting with the annual California Library State Survey, and collection development. In his many years of library service, Alex has done it all from processing literally thousands upon thousands of library materials, playing the cat in the hat, teaching yoga during the summer reading program, and has even stopped the theft of library materials. Alex has gone out to promotional events and assisted countless patrons with searches, computer issues, checking out materials, and creating new library card accounts. Alex has been incredibly reliable and dependable, receiving perfect attendance twice. He is trustworthy, hardworking, and diligent, consistently earning high marks for quality and quantity of work. He has worked late nights, weekends, and ten-hour days. Alex's hobbies include traveling. He has been to all 50 U.S. states, the Canadian Rockies, Yellowstone National Park, Niagara Falls, Quebec City, Puerto Rico, and the Caribbean. He enjoys collecting postcards from his travels. He loves Southern gospel music, and dabbles in piano, keyboard, guitar, and banjo. Alex has written song lyrics and music, as well as created multiple demos for recording and publishing companies. Alex has been married to his wife Vicki for 39 years. Join us in congratulating the City of Porterville Employee of the Month for April 2025, Alex Pollak.
Alex. Alex, Alex, you gotta, I'm a politician, we gotta take a picture, man. Come on.
I'll just let those three guys do it. Too many faces.
City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we also have Employee Service Awards. Tonight, we have seven employees to be honored. First employee is Rosio Mejia of the Community Development Department. So I've asked Ms. Cal Derone, the Community Development Director, to present.
All right, it is with great pride that we honor Rosio Mejia in recognition of her dedication and contributions to the City of Porterville. Rosio began her career with the City of Porterville on March 16, 2020, as an administrative aide in the Community Development Department in the Housing Division. Since joining the team, she has consistently demonstrated a passion for serving the community and advancing the city's planning and development goals. In 2022, she promoted to Assistant Planner. In her current role, Rosio has taken on a variety of special assignments and responsibilities consistently excelling in each. She plays a critical role in tasks like building permit and business license review for zoning and land use, ensuring that all projects align with local regulations. Rosio is also responsible for executing planning grants, researching and assisting with long-range projects such as the housing element, South of the Tulley River, known as the SO2 Master Plan, and the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, which are all vital to the city's continued growth and safety. Among the most rewarding aspects of Rosio's work is her involvement in assisting and guiding developers through the planning process or helping residents realize their vision and watching those projects come to life. Rosio finds great fulfillment in seeing the tangible impact of her efforts on the community. She also takes pride in executing grants such as the SB 2 grant, which funded the development of pre-approved ADU and multifamily housing plans that the city now offers for free as a resource to the community that directly benefits residents, fosters growth within Porterville. Her attention to detail, strong problem-solving skills, and dedication to the community make her an invaluable member of the team. Outside of work, Rosio is a dedicated wife and mother. She and her husband Victor have been happily married for 15 years, and they are proud parents of two daughters, Emma and Abby, which are present tonight. When she's not working, Rosio loves spending quality time with her family, often enjoying a movie night, complete with five bags of popcorn. Much to the delight of her kids, she is also an adventurous spirit who loves visiting amusement parks to ride the craziest roller coasters, seeking thrills and fun with her loved ones. Through her outstanding contributions, Rosio has made a lasting impact on the city's development and well-being. Her commitment to service and her ability to balance a range of responsibilities has had a positive, with a positive attitude and a focus on community benefit, have earned her the respect and admiration of both her colleagues and the community members alike. Thank you for continuing with the City of Porterville, and congratulations.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working here. I can't believe it's been five years that I was trying to take every test that I could, passing, doing great, and still not getting hired. I am so happy to be here. I couldn't have done it without my team. I have a wonderful team that I work with, Community Development, and then also my business fans, my family. Thank you.
Congratulations. If you'd stay at the end, I want another photo shoot, so I just throw that out there.
Yes. Our next Employee Service Award is for Clay Sharp of the Police Department, and I've asked Chief Costello to present this.
Thank you, City Manager. Officer Clay Sharp has proudly served as a law enforcement officer for the City of Porterville Police Department for five years. He graduated from Harmony High School and has continued his education at Porterville College and later at Grand Canyon University, where he gained valuable skills in his, for his law enforcement career. Since joining the department, Officer Sharp has shown dedication, integrity, and commitment to his work. He has made important contributions in several roles, including serving as a detective in our General Investigations Unit, where he worked many complex cases. Officer Sharp also is a member of our Special Weapons and Tactics Team, where he's been assigned to handle complex tactical situations efficiently and safely. Officer Sharp is also one of our field training officers. He has helped train new employees, police officers, and other non-sworn employees throughout our department. His knowledge and experience to our department is key to our success and his success in making the city safer. Outside of work, Officer Sharp is devoted to his family. He is married, has a two-year-old daughter, and he enjoys spending time with them. In his other free time, Officer Sharp likes golfing, going to the gym, and staying active, maintaining his healthy balance between work and his personal life. Officer Sharp's dedication to public safety, his service to this community, and his positive influence on others make him a valuable asset to the Police Department and to this city. Congratulations to Officer Sharp.
I'll nod one for speeches. I'm sorry? I would just like to first and foremost thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, you, City Council, PD Admin, Chief Costello, my in-laws, my wife, my daughter, and last but not least, my brothers and sisters in blue. Without all of you, this would not be possible, so thank you.
Our next Employee Service Award goes to Diana Azavado of the Police Department.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. Diana Azavado has been a part of the Porterville Police Department for the last 10 years as a records clerk. Through her diligence and hard work, Diana has promoted to the position of Senior Records Clerk in 2023. She has become an expert in the Public Records Act and has been instrumental in training not only records clerk, but she also helps train new members of the Police Department, including sworn police officers, often in complex areas of records management. She and her husband Manuel have been happily married for 27 years and are proud parents of two wonderful sons. Both of their sons, Aaron and Jacob, are currently serving in the United States Navy, with Aaron at six years of service and Jacob at two years of service. Diana's boys are her pride and joy. Now that they're empty nesters, her and Manuel are making the most of their time by traveling, especially on their motorcycle, on road trips, and discovering new adventures together. Congratulations to Diana Azavado.
Now, you better listen to him, right?
I just want to say thank you to command staff, administration. My team is amazing, my husband, and thank you for the recognition. Thank you.
Our next Employee Service Award goes to Cynthia Porcheers of the Police Department.
I know she's real happy to come up here, looking forward to the speech. Cindy has been working with the records as a records clerk for the Porterville Police Department for the last 10 years. During this time, Cindy has handled many complex tasks in the records unit and is a valued member of the Porterville Police Department. She is always very professional and efficient in her job and ensures that her work is accurate and completed in a timely manner. Her dedication to this position is greatly contributes to the overall success of the Porterville Police Department and to the service of this city. Cindy has been married to her husband Tom for 18 years. Together, they have six children, nine grandchildren. They reside in Tullary, where Cindy enjoys building projects with Tom, solving ward searches, and volunteering at her church. Congratulations to Cindy for her decade.
I want to thank you very much. Everybody who knows me knows I don't like being star of attention, so, but I really thank you very much. I really appreciate this, and I do really enjoy working at the Porterville Police Department. Everyone there is just like family to me, and I am very thankful to work with the records unit, with the ladies. They are awesome, supportive, and great friends, so I just thank you so much. Thank you.
The next Employee Service Award goes to somebody who's always willing to stand up and do what's needed, really stepped up in the last several years for the City of Porterville, and it goes to Chris Pasani of the Fire Department.
Christopher Pasani began his career with the City of Porterville on January 4, 2010, and he dedicated 15 years of exemplary service to the community. Initially hired as a firefighter, Chris quickly demonstrated his leadership potential and commitment to public safety. In 2015, he was promoted to Fire Engineer, followed by his advancement to Fire Lieutenant in 2017. He continued, his continued growth and outstanding performance led to his promotion to Fire Captain in 2019, and in 2023, he earned the role of Fire Battalion Chief, a position he currently holds. Throughout his career, Chris has taken on numerous special assignments and responsibilities. As an administrative battalion chief, he oversees the creation and submission of essential reports, manages grants, handles public information, conducts policy reviews, and assists the department's budget, assists with the department's budget. Additionally, he remains actively involved in incident response, providing operational battalion coverage when needed. Outside of his professional responsibilities, Chris serves on the Regional Fire Steering Committee, contributing to the development of local operational policies, and is a member of the Command and Control Committee, further advancing the region's fire service operations. One of the most enjoyable aspects of Chris's job is the opportunity to be part of a highly motivated and dedicated team, both within the Fire Department and across the City of Porterville. He values the collaboration and camaraderie that come with working alongside such a committed group of professionals. Chris also enjoys the variety and unique challenges that being a firefighter brings, finding fulfillment in every new situation that requires his expertise and leadership. Outside of work, Chris enjoys spending time camping with family and friends and traveling to new places. He is married to his wife Shannon, and together they have two children, Carly, age six, and Chase, age three. Chris's commitment to both his family and his community is a reflection of his strong values and dedication to service. Chris's dedication, professionalism, and leadership have made a lasting impact on the City of Porterville, and his continued service is a testament to his unwavering commitment to the department and the community. Thank you for your continued service to the City of Porterville. Thank you. You know, one last thing before Chris speaks. Not only is he celebrating 15 years of service with the City of Porterville, he's also celebrating a birthday this weekend. So I don't want to sing "Happy Birthday" to him, but I think we should at least give him a round of applause for that.
Thanks for that, Chief. Thanks, Don. First of all, I'd like to thank my family. Without them and their support, I wouldn't be able to do this the way I do it. Secondly, I'd like to thank the crews back there, all the firefighters. They're the heart and soul of the Department of the Operation. We can't do anything in the administration function without them, so they're the best. The best crews we have, the best crews in the city and in the country, from my opinion. And then lastly, I'd like to thank the administration staff, Chief Cogburn and his leadership and everything we do. And then the collaboration that we get to do with the other directors and the other departments is top-notch, and I wouldn't have it any other way, and really appreciate working for the city and working with all these people. Thank you.
The next Employee Service Award goes to Eric Resendez of the Parks and Leisure Services Department.
Eric Resendez began his career with the City of Porterville on January 18, 2010, and has proudly served the community for 15 years with the Parks and Leisure Services Department. He was initially hired as a part-time parks maintenance aide, and in 2012, transitioned to a full-time Parks Maintenance Worker 1. Eric's hard work earned him a promotion to Parks Maintenance Worker 2 in 2015, where he has continued to thrive in his role. Eric finds his greatest satisfaction in working in a peaceful and productive environment, where his efforts directly contribute to the smooth operation of the city's facilities. He ensures that City Hall remains a clean, safe, and professional space for both employees and visitors. Outside of his work, Eric values spending time with his family. He is married to his wife, Ariselli, and together they have five children and six grandchildren. When he's not at work, Eric enjoys traveling and finding ways to give back to the community. He is an active member of the Catholic men's organization Knights of Columbus, where he was honored with a three-year service award as Grand Knight. Eric is also a certified industrial maintenance technician, having earned his certification from COS. Eric's dedication to his work, family, and community reflects his strong character and commitment to service. His contributions to the Parks and Leisure Services Department and the broader Porterville community are greatly appreciated, and his continued service is a true testament to his passion for making a difference. Thank you for your continuing service to the City of Porterville, and congratulations.
Thank you. I want to thank God for everything possible. Another thing, I hold another hat. I'm on a golf tournament committee for Fenn Power. It's gonna be May 31st. So all those golfers. I just want to thank you very much, and yes, I do have a very peaceful environment because nobody's here. And I will be back for that picture. Thank you so much.
Our final Employee Service Award for this evening is Sabrina Swarthout with the Fire Department.
Sabrina began her career with the City of Porterville on January 4, 2010, and dedicated 15 years of exceptional service to the community. She was hired as a firefighter and in 2017 was promoted to Fire Engineer. Sabrina's special assignments and duties include driving and pumping the engine, as well as responding to emergency calls. She has proven herself as an acting captain and is called upon to step into an officer role when the department requires additional leadership. Recently, Sabrina became one of the newest members of the Fire Investigation Unit, further showcasing her versatility and commitment to the department. One of the most rewarding aspects of Sabrina's role is the ability to help the citizens of Porterville and the surrounding areas. She finds true fulfillment in making a difference on what might be someone's worst day, viewing her service as a privilege and an opportunity to positively impact the community. Outside of her fire service duties, Sabrina is deeply involved in educating the next generation of firefighters. She teaches at both the College of the Sequoias and Porterville College Firefighter 1 academies. Her areas of instruction include incident command systems, self-contained breathing apparatus, ladders, hazardous materials, firefighter survival and rescue operations, equipping students with the knowledge and skills necessary to succeed in the field. In her personal life, she has married her husband Andrew Swarthout and has two stepdaughters, Brady, age 18, and Devlin, age nine. When she's not at work or teaching, Sabrina enjoys spending time with her, on their small farm, barefoot in the pasture with emus, chickens, ducks, and her favorite goose, Lucy. She also finds joy in tending to their garden and orchard. Sabrina's dedication to both her profession and her family exemplifies her strong work ethic, passion for service, and love for the community. Her impact on the City of Porterville, as well as her efforts to nurture the next generation of firefighters, is a testament to her commitment and leadership. Thank you for your continuing service to the City of Porterville, and congratulations.
Just want to thank everyone. It's been a fantastic 15 years. I just want to say thank you to my husband, who's here, and my family. They've supported me along the way, and to the family in the back over there who I didn't know I needed in life, and they have been a great addition to my life. So I look forward to the next 15 years.
All right, if I could, if you're still here as a service awardee, if you could come up to the front and take a picture with me, I greatly appreciate it. come up to the front and take a picture with me, I greatly appreciate it.
Do it now? Yes. Come on, Stan. It's about them.
Well, as we allow the room to clear here now, I just want to state that we appreciate all employees, the service employees. You are what keeps the city running, so greatly appreciate all of you. So at this time, we'll move into oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matters of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentaries shall be limited to three minutes.
Tell me when you're ready. Sherri Shields, Porterville. I came here weeks and weeks ago, almost a month, and asked for a request for information. I filled out the forms. I was supposed to be given information on the homeless. We received $1 million for the homeless, yet the money is nowhere to be found. When I have to tell this city to Google it and find out in the newspaper that in September we received a million dollars for homeless, there's an issue. Where's the money? I griped about the garbage cans that you have out there. There's no change on them. They're there. You're getting trees for about $8,000 apiece that you're going to put down on Main Street. Haven't figured out that one yet, but I've got some trees to sell you. We have the Navigation Center, which has 30 beds, and they provide a breakfast burrito, a little lunch, and at nighttime, the homeless get nothing. We have an armory that provides nothing but a cot. Opens at 8:00, closes at 8:00. You can go there. I went there this morning. People laying on the ground on the outside of it. They say, "Well, the homeless don't want to be in there." No, they don't want to be in there. When you're getting nothing, and when you're getting nothing but a cold cot, who wants to be in there locked in there all night long? It is unfair that there is money out there that should be allocated to the homeless people. I was very disrespected by Mr. Beltranz today, and you owe me an apology. You don't hang up on people when they're talking to you. If you were busy or anything else, you should have told me. You'll give me a call back, or you'll get back with me. You don't just hang up on me. I don't go away, sir. I voted for you, and I'm very disappointed in my vote now. When I came down here to try to get information, still no information. They're working on it. I don't want to listen to you try to tell me how the Navigation Center is run, because I've been down there. You said you were down there, and you forgot a man, a woman, and a child, three rooms for the next three nights. And that was your big whoopee yesterday. You know what? The welfare department provides 16 days for anybody with any children in a hotel room. They don't do it for a homeless man or a homeless woman. They do do it for people with children. Those people should have been at the welfare department. They do it within a matter of hours' time. They give them food stamps. They provide all that stuff. We provide, down at the Pall Bunion Motel, if you go down there and look at it, it's all kind of boarded up. It's very nasty. You ought to do something about that. Where all the workers and everything are working, they're getting their food stamps. They're getting their houses provided for. Where we got? We got homeless on the streets. We're putting up all these lights down by the river. Who's paying for all that? Is that homeless money? Your nasty trash cans out here. Give me a few more minutes.
Please summarize, Ms. Shields, you have 30 seconds.
This bull crap of having the armory down there, only providing a cot, is not providing the services for the homeless, and you told me that you don't have to, that we don't have to provide for them. No, you're not obligated to provide for them, but wake up.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward for oral communication?
I'm Kathleen Harris, and all my information is on file. On Tuesday, March 25th, I placed my black can and my blue can out on the street for pickup. I did need the black can, so I put it out early. On Wednesday, the 26th, my blue can was not emptied. At 1:38, I called and left a message and brought my can in. At 3:46 the same day, I called again. I was told I had to wait until the trucks came in so they could find out what happened and that I'd have to pay for a second trip to empty my blue can. They would give me a call back. 4:54, called again, same day, and was told everyone went home and had no call back. Next day, Thursday, at 8:33 a.m., I called again, was given the same information from the previous day. Said supervisor would call by the end of the day as requested. I got no call back from the supervisor. On Friday, at 8:13, I called again. Still no information. The same day, at 3:52, the supervisor called, and I was told the driver attempted to pick the can up on Wednesday at 2:30. I'd already brought my can in, because they hadn't emptied it. I didn't know he was coming, and was also told the driver came again on Thursday. Again, my can was not out, as no one bothered to call me to let me know that they were coming. They had my information. The supervisor claimed that the driver said my black can was out, but my blue can was not. Yes, it was, as I previously had stated. And then he starts talking over me. The supervisor asked if the high school was possibly blocking my car. Schools aren't out in session that week. And at 6:30 in the morning, they're not doing anything. And the night before, there were no games. There was nothing out there. And I said, "No, there are no vehicles on the street and no game the night before." The supervisor, like I said, was talking over me the entire time. I tried to explain what had happened, and he asked if I was calling the driver a liar as my can was not outside. I said, "Yes, I am. My can was outside, and he's clearly saying that my can was not." He says every time they go by my house, they will start taking pictures of my home. The supervisor was being a bully. He was disrespectful and threatening with the photos. I told him I would bring this to the council. No female, or anyone else for that matter, should be treated like this. I felt like I was beneath him, because I'm a female, and he's a man, and he's more dominant than I am. That's not acceptable.
Kathleen, if you, we, the city prides itself on customer service to the constituents of Porterville. If you leave your information with staff, I think you'll...
Information is on file. I'm on the city...
No, if you just leave your information with staff, we'll get someone to reach out to you, okay, ma'am?
Okay.
Thank you.
Fernando. What you're receiving is all the legal restrictions on parental rights within the state of California on the first page. If you don't like them, get your Republicans elected in the state Capitol. This is the laws as they stand today. You cannot circumvent them with your municipal code. Second and third page are excerpts from various Federalist Papers talking about the separation of church and state and the First Amendment, and the thoughts of Madison and Hamilton on those two things. Basically, Madison wanted things to be, in the First Amendment and the Establishment Clause, to keep any one religion from gaining too much power within government, like we have here in Porterville. Read your Constitution. Read its supporting documents. Abide by the Constitution you swore and oath to.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
I probably don't need a mic, anyway. I'm so loud. Hi, Rafaela Woods, 44 North Prospect. Actually, I've just come to let you know, obviously, Spring Festival is going on next week. Look out for Hopper. For those of you not so young, you will remember the Heart of Porterville Association mascot Hopper. It's coming back. It's going to be at the Spring Festival, so look out for Hopper. Also, the Jackass Mall Run is happening on the 19th of April, and it's, obviously, it's a Porterville event that comes all the way to Springville. I would like to openly invite you guys to be part of our dunk tank. I think no one, I know, Mayor Maister, I already invited him, so I'm going to try again. Please come and be dunked. We need someone with thick skin. We need someone who's got lots of people who like them, and lots of people that don't like them quite so much, because either way, you're going to raise a ton of money for the community. So I think it's a great event, so you all have my contact details. So feel free to contact me if you would like to be dunked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Is there anyone else?
I want to be dunked, huh? Good afternoon. I am David Jimenez.
I'm Celeste Lemos.
We are students at Granite Hills High School, and we are in the process of our senior year project. We're picking a concerning issue about our community and trying to improve it. For our project, my group and I have decided to focus on Murray Park, which is located near our school. We have recently visited this park and taken a few pictures where we can see trash, graffiti, and bird droppings. All throughout the park, we have also organized survey, a survey which we posted all around our campus, asking students and staff members, what is a concerning issue that they have about the park? The responses mainly include how unsanitary the restaurants are, the amount of bird droppings, how filthy the pond is, and litter being everywhere.
We had also asked for suggestions on how to fix these issues. Some of them were pretty good ideas and seemed like it should be a necessity for this park, such as building a fence around the park, around the pond, regarding the safety of both children and the ducks. There have been a few encounters where children have accidentally fallen into the pond, or people have been mistreating the ducks. Either way, it has to stop. We have also thought of a few ideas ourselves, such as hiring a pressure washing company that should visit the park at least once a week to clean the bird droppings and graffiti, as well as hiring janitors to help maintain the park clean. Not just janitors, but you can also offer community service hours to individuals to help clean the park at least once a month. We are mainly here to ask for your support and guidance on how we can help fix these issues and maintain our park clean so others can enjoy.
Thank you.
Hey, great job.
Thank you.
Follow that. Want that, buddy?
Blaming, I'm Taha Saleh. My information's on. Yeah, how am I going to follow that? I'm a nervous wreck up here. You guys made it look so easy. I just want to say congratulations to Rosario, Clay, Diana, Cynthia, Chris, Eric, and Sabrina. That's just an example of the amazing human beings that are in our community. Most of them have either relocated here or came here, and it just reassures me that we are safe and that we are supported and that we're just surrounded by amazing people. And that goes into what I want to talk about a little bit tonight. I brought it up at the last meeting, my personal concern and the concern of business members of the city manager, the interim city manager position. I did notice that there is a new posting, and you guys have a couple of months, so I appreciate the expedite that you put into that. I just hope that you guys stick to that and do do that. I do notice that, I want to acknowledge Mayor Greg Meister. You've been a straight shooter. You've been honest. You've been attentive. You've been a great leader, and I acknowledge you for that. You've said everything that you meant. That being said, I understand that you have a desire for a strong mayor, so I'm wondering if that's getting in the way of the council's movement on installing a full-time city manager. So I know you've talked a little bit about it, Raymond. You've talked a lot about your position. I've been trying, I've run out of my way to talk to a few members, and I appreciate those. For the most part, the council has been very transparent when I talk to them, and I really, really appreciate you guys' service. But there are, there is somebody I just can't seem to find, Stan. And my invitation to you is to respond to my email and connect with me, and let's have a conversation. And I'm here to support every one of you, especially you, Stan. I will make time out of my, out of my personal day to go over the agenda, or whatever it is you need to do to get you up to speed and participating, because I'm really concerned that every person's position up here is very important, and everybody says it's very important. And when you take the few minutes to explain where you're at in each subject, that matters. That's letting your constituents know where you're at, how you're feeling, where you're going, and that's important. And to have somebody up there that just doesn't share that is a missed opportunity. So I look forward to hearing more about what you think, Stan. Other than that, I think it's, if we can, if we can stick to the current system we have, I think we have a great opportunity for somebody who has a lot of experience that's here. It's an example of investing into our community and the people that are in our community already, and I'd hate for us to lose an opportunity to have such an amazing human being who is our interim city manager and not be the city manager. That's just my personal opinion. The town's doing great. There's a lot of great things. You guys are doing a great job, and I'd like to see that momentum continue. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I acknowledge you all for being in service. It's not easy to sit up there and have people come in with their problems all the time, so I acknowledge you guys taking it and being professional, and I just appreciate you guys, and I appreciate what you guys do for the city. So thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you, Todd.
Betty Luna, Porterville. And I have Janelli Russell Perez, Porterville. So good evening, city council members. My name is Betty Luna, and I have Janelli with me. We work for the Family Crisis Center, and I myself is a member of the Porterville Exchange Club. We are here as the voices for the children in our communities to remind everyone that April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Child abuse and neglect are not just isolated incidents, they are systemic issues that have devastating consequences for individuals and communities. The trauma of abuse can have long-lasting effects on child's physical, emotional, and physiological well-being. Preventing abuse requires a multifaceted approach involving families, communities, and professionals. If you are a parent, grandparent, aunt, uncle, teacher, or your life intersects with children in any way, you must think and talk about child abuse. We are not to live in fear. If you see something that doesn't seem right, don't hesitate. Reach out and report. We will never regret the times we have had to step in. Maybe it will help to create the intervention for a parent to get the help they need to parent safely. Speak up. Let's use our voices together and talk to anyone who will listen. Let's face it, children often don't have a voice, so we need to be their voice. Be vocal as a child protector, as a community member. Today, we come before you to offer you and the individuals here tonight blue ribbons to wear for 30 days or all year to show your support that you as a community, to let us commit to making our community safer for children. Let us be vigilant, proactive, and united in our efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect. Every child deserves a bright future, and it's our responsibility to ensure that they have the opportunity to reach their full potential. Let us work together to create a world where every child feels safe, loved, and protected. For many years, we have wrapped ribbons around the trees, but as you know, they are all gone down Main Street. So tonight, we stand before you also to ask for permission to wrap the ribbons along Main Street, if possible, on the light posts around there. And thank you for your time tonight, and I have these ribbons for you, and we have some for them.
Thank you, Ms. Luna.
Thank you.
Ms. Luna, would you leave your information with staff? And then that way, we could have the conversation on wrapping the light poles. I love that idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's David Horowitz. I'm just in Porterville. I think everybody knows who I am. I'm here for several reasons. One, probably what I'm about to say won't be good for me later, because I like to be on the committee, but first, I'd like to say this, because it's very important. Stan's been very open with me. I've had conversations about what's going on in Porterville, as with every one of your other council members, and congratulations on you new members. I haven't been here. I've avoided it because there's been too much controversy. I would probably offend a lot of people, as I may wind up doing right now. I am very glad that you've extended the city manager... Maybe it will help to create the intervention for a parent to get the help they need to parent safely. Speak up, let's use our voices together and talk to anyone who will listen. Let's face it, children often don't have a voice, so we need to be their voice. Be vocal as a child protector, as a community member. Today, we come before you to offer you and the individuals here tonight blue ribbons to wear for thirty days or all year to show your support that you as a community, to let us commit to making our community safer for children. Let us be vigilant, proactive, and united in our efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect. Every child deserves a bright future, and your, uh, it's our responsibility to ensure that they have the opportunity to reach their full potential. Let us work together to create a world where every child feels safe, loved, and protected. For many years, we have wrapped ribbons around the trees, but as you know, they are all gone down Main Street. So tonight, we stand before you also to ask for permission to wrap the ribbons along Main Street, if possible, on the light posts around there. And thank you for your time tonight, and I have these ribbons for you, and we have some for them.
Thank you, Ms. Luna. Ms. Luna, would you leave your, your information with staff? And then that way, we could have the conversation on wrapping the light poles. I love that idea. Thank you. Thank you.
My name's David Horowitz. This is in the Porterville, I think everybody knows who I am. I'm here for several reasons. One, um, probably what I'm about to say won't be good for me later, because I like to be on the committee. But first, I'd like to say this, because it's very important. Stan's been very open with me, and had conversations about what's going on in Porterville. As with every one of you other council members, and congratulations on you new members. I haven't been here, I've avoided it, because there's been too much controversy. I would probably offend a lot of people, as I may wind up doing right now. I am very glad that you've extended the city manager opportunities. Nothing against Jason, he's a very nice gentleman. But we've had very poor management in this city for many, many years. I call it our lawless period, because we had no rules, we followed no rules. We did whatever, the city did whatever they wanted. They did not understand that city employees work for us. Our tax dollars pay that wage, that wage, that wage, that wage, and every other person in here. Unfortunately, we've had a problem with city staff over the last twenty years, where they think they can tell us what we're gonna do and how we're gonna deal with it. We've had city people that have lied, I've caught them in three lies, saying that they've done things that they haven't done. One particular gentleman says he sent out ninety-four notices about a situation, which was amazing to me, because the post office needs to be contacted, because they did not deliver one of the ninety-four notices. That would tell me he's a liar, and I have no problem saying that, okay? I've also had problems with our police department. A lot of people don't know this, but I was the largest robbery in the city of Porterville's history. Could not get the chief of police to talk to me or my attorney. It's very unfortunate that a citizen and a merchant who supports the community tremendously cannot get these people to talk to us. We also have a situation in our city with code enforcement. Unfortunately, our code enforcement is illegal, and our city attorney knows this. Code enforcement must be across the board, it cannot be specific. You cannot pick who you want to enforce the codes with and who you don't. Our code enforcement is selective. The only way our codes are enforced is if somebody calls and complains. So a good example, and I'm gonna use me again, because I seem to be picked on a lot. Um, I don't know why, because I do a lot for the community, but our management of our community doesn't like me. So, I was fined eight hundred dollars for a banner. And unfortunately, businesses on both sides of me had banners.
Please summarize.
Thank you. Neither one of them were, were fined, only me. I was singled out. So we need to look outside of the community for some management that will actually do something that's good for our community. We're all here to benefit our community, I think that's why all you ran for office, was to benefit your community. But if we've got a management in our city staff that thinks that they're in control and we're not, they're not benefiting our community. And when you've got someone who donates a tremendous amount of money and is abused, that's probably not a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Horowitz.
Greg Shelton, H. North Wilford Drive. I'm gonna probably be a bit of a letdown here, because I'm gonna talk about some boring stuff, development ordinance. We're coming up on, uh, picking a charter review committee, and I saw on the charter review was development ordinance. But I learned something from our city planner, um, that's called the Rone. Uh, I guess we've, we've been undergoing kind of a stealth, um, revision of the, the development ordinance, which I think is a good thing, we're down to like one, uh, section. And, um, and part, part of that development ordinance has to do, and I guess it has to do, I was here twenty years ago when we wrote this, and it was done in the time of, uh, the first housing bubble, and a lot of assumptions didn't come through. So what happened is, is we're kind of woefully inadequate in, in it. It makes a lot of assumptions that, that don't really apply today. A couple of them have to do with affordable housing, um, a couple of them have to do with, um, uh, zoning in terms of like, uh, we de-emphasized, uh, the trades in, in lieu of like more, um, optimistic visions of what we wanted. And so, as a result, it's very difficult for someone that has a lowbrow profession like me to work on cars to be able to even afford or have a place to put a, a mechanic shop. So I think that we need to change that. I've, uh, sent some, some ideas to Ms. Calderon, and hopefully they'll get reviewed by our consultant. Another one has to do with, um, private storage. And, uh, I, I rent a storage building over here, and when I talk to the gentleman owns it, he tells me that, um, that they're full up and they're having a hard time, you know, people are having a hard time getting storage. So, um, we use storage buildings. On our code, we're up to, allowed to have the one hundred and twenty square foot building with no permit. The problem is a lot of the good storage buildings come bigger than that. Hundred and eighty, two hundred square feet, fucking C-trains, van boxes. Um, when I was on council, there was a big push to get a wet do away with them. But it was really more because they were targeting Walmart, and they wanted to make sure that, that it would stick, so they, they bound it for everybody. I don't think it's worked very well. What I've noticed now is a lot of our housing is small, and a lot of our yards are small. So as a result, we just don't have enough room for our junk. And so what happens is you can buy a hundred and twenty square foot tin building from Home Depot, but it's, it's pretty, pretty inadequate. So I'm thinking that when maybe we, we look at this ordinance, maybe increase the size up to about two hundred square feet. That's about the size of a C-train or a van box. And, um, I think that would be, that would be helpful to people that are buying smaller houses nowadays and don't have their stuff. So anyway, um, I hope that this development ordinance, as we review it, will address a lot of problems. I hope to work with Ms. Calderon to try to give her some input, and maybe during the charter review committee, we could do, uh, do something in that time, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
I'm glad to see this microphone does work.
You didn't turn it on for me.
I'm, uh, Dr. Dale Seaman from Calvary Baptist Church here in Porterville. I've been reading with interest in the paper, uh, how you're trying to help out as far as the mixed meter situation. Uh, we came across at ourselves, our water bill went through the roof there, and I called the city and they told me we could set another meter up, and we started looking into the possibilities. The problem was, it was too expensive. Not only that, we have, uh, church is, the building is thirty-five years old, and we have, I think, eight different locations where we tap into the water line. So one, one new meter is gonna mean we're gonna be tapping into multiple and having to do all kinds of other work to try to get that done. We looked in and said we can't do it. Something came to me, and I was hoping to talk to, I couldn't, today he wasn't in, uh, over there at the city, uh, on, uh, an idea of, is it possible to take and do, uh, in the wintertime, establish a level when the, when the irrigation water's not being used? And then take that level and apply it to the summertime? That's just a thing I wanted to mention to you. I was, I was told that you were the ones that are concerned. So therefore, as far as the sewer, you wouldn't be paying for water that you're using for irrigation in the summertime. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? This is the time. I'm not seeing anyone. Fernando, is there anyone online?
No, Your Honor.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of schedule matters. How would council like to go forward? Or is there any agenda items that anyone would like to pull for a conversation?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull one, seven, and twenty-two for discussion.
Okay, we have items one, seven, and twenty-two pulled for discussion. Is there any, any others? If not, I'm looking for an entertainment of, uh, a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion. A motion for consent calendar, items two through six, eight through twenty-one, and twenty-three through twenty-five.
I second that motion.
Okay, call for the vote. Passes four one. All right. We'll move on to schedule matters, city manager.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, tonight, we have eleven scheduled matters, including the items that were pulled. Uh, the first item is a consideration of appointment for the Arts Commission, and I've asked Ms. Andrade to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan Arrow, mayor's, mayor and members of the council. The city's Arts Commission consists of five members plus one youth member representing various areas of the arts, including theatrical, performing arts, visual graphics, music, and youth. Members serve staggered three-year terms, with the exception of the youth member who serves a one-year term. Currently, there are two vacancies on the Arts Commission, two regular seats with terms expiring in July twenty-twenty-six. A request for reappointment has been received from Ms. Yesenia Asensio, and the request is attached for the city's, council's consideration. On March ten, twenty-twenty-five, Commissioner Emily Dummer, uh, informed staff that she could no longer serve on the commission, creating one of the two vacancies. Staff will continue to advertise and solicit applications from interested individuals to fill the remaining vacancy. The recommendation is that the city council consider the appointment of Yesenia Asensio to the city's Arts Commission and direct staff to continue to solicit individuals to serve. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Yuli. Are there any questions for staff? I'm not seeing any, so I'll, I'll make a motion and go ahead with staff recommendation. Is there?
I second that.
Okay. Any, any more conversation? Call for the vote. Passes five zero. City manager?
Yes, Your Honor. The next item is item twenty-seven, consideration of appointments to the Downtown Porterville Committee, and I've asked Ms. Andrade to provide the staff report.
Again, thank you, Mr. Ryan Arrow, mayor and members of council. At its meeting on February fourth, twenty-twenty-five, the city council adopted resolution number fifteen dash twenty-twenty-five establishing the Downtown Porterville Committee. This committee serves in an advisory capacity, making recommendations to the city council regarding policies, goals, and objectives for the Downtown Porterville area. The committee consists of seven members, including two city council members and five public members. Resolution number fifteen dash twenty-twenty-five outlines that the public membership is to be comprised of downtown business owners and the Porterville Chamber of Commerce. To be eligible for appointment, individuals must own a business located within the city of Porterville, specifically in the Downtown Porterville area, or represent the Porterville Chamber of Commerce. There are currently five vacancies on the committee. Staff has received nine requests for appointments. Staff has reviewed each request for appointment and determined that eight applicants met the membership criteria outlined in resolu, in the resolution. The requests for appointments that meet the established criteria are provided herein for the city council's consideration. We have Larissa Frye, David Horowitz, Kristy Martin, Ted Pannick, Katie Adams-Puett, Taha Saleh, Robert Taylor, and Sam Zenz. The city clerk's office did receive a written request on April first from Mr. Taha Saleh, respectfully withdrawing his application from consideration. Additionally, a request for appointment, uh, was received from Ms. Dawn Bennett. However, after review, it has been determined that Ms. Bennett does not meet the eligibility requirements established by the council, as the business included in the application is within the city limits but outside the Downtown Porterville area. The recommendation is that the city council consider the appointments to the Downtown Porterville Committee. Um, as you can see, the city has received more applicants than vacancies, so there are multiple ways that we can go about conducting this. Uh, one of the options is where a member of council can present a motion with five names, and it can be voted on by the full council. Uh, another one is acting chief deputy city clerk is prepared, uh, with the second option. He has prepared ballots where you can each vote on five names, and he will tally the votes on a prepared spreadsheet. Then the council can make a motion to vote on the names with the most votes. These are just recommendations, but the council can proceed however they'd like. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Yuli. We'll bring it back to council. How would you like to go forward? Vice Mayor, do you look anxious?
Um, I just wanted to ask a question. Um, I didn't get a chance to meet Ted on the list. Is Ted Pannick here tonight?
He owns Ted's Games to Go Downtown.
Um, I could see if we can try just doing a verbal. I can make a motion that I'd like to get Larissa Frye, David Horowitz, Katie Adams-Puett, Robert Taylor, and Sam Zenz as a five.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there any other, uh, conversation or comments? So your motion is Larissa Frye, David Horowitz, Katie Adams-Puett, Robert Taylor, and Sam Zenz? Is there a second for this motion?
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a second. Um, is there any other conversations? Councilman Beltran?
I would just add that there's not a member of the Chamber of Commerce on there. Um, so...
I know Larissa Frye is a chamber member, David Horowitz is a chamber member, and Robert Taylor is a chamber member.
I know David is.
Well, I guess the, uh, not necessarily a member, but a representative from the chamber. It would be Taha Saleh or Kristy Martin.
Well, Taha removed his name.
Taha removed his name.
Sorry about that.
Uh, Kristy, so what you're saying is you want a...
I would like a representative, because just, they have, might have a voice for multiple businesses down there versus somebody who might, I guess there's some representative versus a, a business owner themselves.
Okay, um, we have a first and a second. Legal, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, I mean, you have, you have a first and a second, so now it's time for discussion. If, if there's no change to amend, then you would vote on the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion for change and amend. Uh, does he have a second?
Uh, who were the names again?
Larissa Frye, David Horowitz, Katie Adams-Puett, Robert Taylor, and Sam Zenz.
There's no motion for a second, there's just a request, but there's no obligation by the, the, the one that made the motion or the one that seconded the change, although they can if they want to.
Uh, will you in, uh, consider amending?
No.
Vice Mayor? No?
Oh, I'm sorry, who are you talking to? I was gonna make a comment, because, um, the creation of the committee, uh, Councilman Beltran voted against the creation of this committee, and I was making a recommendation to, to change it. I'd just make that note.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Beltran, any comments?
No, just that you, you might get a better, uh, you're right, I, I don't know the success of this committee, but just my input, since it's going forward, uh, might have some, you know, say in it, is that, uh, I think a representative from the Chamber of Commerce would have multiple voices than just a singular, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. I'll, I'll just also add that, uh, Vice Mayor and Councilman Green are the committee members, and the motion and the second has come from them, so I just wanna put that out there as well. With that, I think we're at a point where we'll call for the vote. Passes four one. Okay, city manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. The, the next item tonight is the nomination of representative of the Tulare County California Identification System, also known as CAL ID, in a no-access board, which is known as the RAND Board. Uh, there is currently a vacancy for a city mayor member of the, of the Tulare County California Identification System and a no-access board. The position must be filled by a mayor from Tulare County City. This position is vacated by former mayor Martha Flores. At the end of her term as mayor of the city of Porterville. The CAL ID RAND Board was established in nineteen eighty-nine, pursuant to California Penal Code one-one-one-one-two-point-four. The purpose of the board is to oversee implementation and operation of the CAL ID system in Tulare County. The responsibilities of the board include the placement of RAND equipment within the county, coordination and acceptance, delivery, installation of the equipment, and developing policies and procedures regulating the ongoing use of RAND equipment. The board meets a minimum of once per year, on a last Thursday of September, but may schedule additional meetings throughout the year as deemed necessary by the board. The appointment will be made by the city selection committee at its next meeting, scheduled for April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The city council has been asked to nominate a preferred candidate for consideration. The city council, uh, city selection committee, staff recommendation, the council, select a preferred candidate, uh, to nominate, to be appointed to the, uh, city selection committee as the mayor member of the County Tulare CAL ID RAND Board. Staff, any questions?
Thank you, city manager. Uh, bringing it back to the council. Historically, the mayor has filled this position. I don't mind doing the RAND Board position and working with, uh, Tulare County, uh, law enforcement and other agencies. So I would, uh, if there's no other conversation, I'll make a motion for myself to be the member.
I second that.
Any other conversation? Okay, call for the vote. Passes five zero. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item for consideration is authorization to purchase a Happy Easter banner for Main Street, and I've asked Mr. Moore to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan Arrow, honorable mayor and members of the council. At its meeting on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the city council approved Vice Mayor McCurvy's request for an item to be added to the April first agenda to consider purchasing a Happy Easter banner for Main Street. The city of Porterville utilizes the banner poles on Main Street, donated by the Porterville Exchange Club at the corner of Main and Cleveland to advertise events, seasons, and/or programs that are held in Porterville. On August twenty, two thousand twenty-four, the city council approved a policy on the exhibition of federal, state, and city flags and banners from city buildings and facilities all occasions. Banners on city property poles must be approved, scheduled, and coordinated by the city. On December third, two thousand twenty-four, city council authorized the purchase and installation of a... of a Merry Christmas banner for Main Street to be displayed during the holiday season. The approximate cost of a banner is thirteen hundred dollars. The estimated production time of the banner is seven business days. The production timeframe should enable the banner to be displayed the week of Easter. City staff would design the banner to be very similar to that of the Merry Christmas banner. Funds are available in the community promotion budget should the city council approve this purchase. Staff's recommendations that the city council approve the purchase of a Happy Easter banner for Main Street to be paid out of the community promotion budget. That concludes staff's report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Moore. Bringing it back to council, I think this was a great idea. I'm looking forward to seeing what we could go forward with. Not much discussion on the design, right? We're gonna leave it up to staff, but we want to give some direction tonight on what we want it to look like. I mean, is it pink? Is it got bunnies on it? And carrots? Where are we going? So I'll leave that to council. Councilman Beltran, any comments?
Did we have images on the Christmas banner? I'm trying to remember. Yeah, it was just the fonts of, or the phrase.
Actually, just let our staff, trusted our staff to produce something and...
Yeah, but there wasn't like Christmas trees or candy canes or...
It just said Merry Christmas, and there was, on either side, there was like some bows, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, it was real simple.
I like that recommendation, to be honest. Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Something simple.
Okay, I'll take the, I'll make a motion and go with staff recommendation. Donnie, it's on you.
No pressure, we got it.
Is there a second?
I second your motion.
Okay, call for, call for the vote. Passes five zero. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is a consideration of airport lease agreement for lot number nine, and I've asked Mr. Tree to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan Arrow, Honorable Mayor, city council members, running a very efficient meeting tonight. Appreciate it. This item is pretty straightforward in the spirit of efficiency. At its meeting on March eighteenth, the city council approved Vice Mayor McCurvy's request for an item to be added to the April first agenda to consider Arrow Falcon Exporters' request to renew their lease of lot nine at the Porterville Municipal Airport with requested changes. Arrow Falcon is a current leaseholder and has been operating on a month-to-month basis since their previous lease expired on September of two thousand twenty-four. They have requested a ten-year lease starting March one, two thousand twenty-five through February twenty-eight, two thousand thirty-five. Although council approved the original lease on March fourth of this year, the Lisi later revoked their signature due to concerns with section two, which allowed for early termination by the city per charter section sixty-eight. The Lisi has requested that this clause be removed or waived. Tonight, we're seeking your direction on how to proceed. Staff, for purpose of discussion, staff recommends that the city council, number one, consider waiving the charter section sixty-eight requirements for this lease, and if so, staff has drafted an updated lease agreement for your consideration. And third, if approved, authorize the mayor to execute the lease agreement. This is conclusion of staff's report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Tree. We'll pull it back to staff. Vice Mayor McCurvy, this was your, your motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this back. I think the idea of section sixty-eight is not having it or having it in the lease agreement doesn't change the charter, but I think that it's a little bit redundant. I do like the terminology here. I think what puts people off is it's at the pleasure to repossess the premises, and I want to make a motion, or at least a discussion about, there should be something in here as far as cause. There needs to be a cause. In any standard lease agreement, there should be cause, even though you reserve the right as a city to repossess property under certain conditions, but there's also always a cause or there's a reason, and I think that would make this better. Whether section sixty-eight is referred to in here or not is not a, it's not a big deal for me, and we can remove it, no problem, as long as we have something in here about cause. And I think that as we open up a committee on the airport leases or the airport committee, we can review all the language for all the leases going forward and make sure that the committee and the owners that are on that committee have a chance to weigh into that lease language and lease, provide some recommendations so that it seems more palatable. It may just be a perception, because it feels it's like threatening language. I don't think we would ever do such a thing or ever have, but, you know, I think that's a perception that we need to look at in the committee. But as far as this agreement, I think that we could easily go with this without the sixty-eight and renew this lease, because it's pending, and then go back and review all the language.
Okay, I, just to make comment, I like the language in there. I feel that it's transparent. I like that we've added the section sixty-eight from the city charter. I don't mind the idea of with cause.
Well, so we're sort of, staff's stuck on this because the charter says we have to put this language in, right? So, so in the chart, this is language directly out of the charter. I agree with everything the vice mayor said with regard to this. We've tried on numerous occasions to actually remove this. I think maybe this time around with charter review committee, you know, we can actually try to go for a modification if we think that it's just, I think, you know, after trying twice, two or three times now to remove the language, maybe we just realize it may just have to be adjusted to get the, to get the public to potentially approve something, because I can tell you, I've been representing the city for a very long time now, for two-plus decades, and I've, we've never, I've never seen this language actually invoked and utilized by California law, even with a long-term lease, if there was ever a need, and we usually do put language in most, you'll see it in almost all leases, you know, if we need the property for a public purpose, as a public agency, we have the ability to engage in eminent domain. We just really don't like to. This is essentially like a contractual eminent domain clause. That's how we've reviewed it. It allows for some, on one side for the city, it allows for us to speed up the process because, you know, it can take time to get somebody out. On the other hand, it also provides a very, you know, favorable sort of valuation method for the tenant for the, to receive valuation of the improvements and make sure that it's fair. So, you know, it has a little bit of a balance in it, but you're right, that at its pleasure language, which is unfortunately in the charter, we're stuck with it. But if you guys would like to remove it, I don't know that we're gonna have a bunch of people up in arms with the fact that we didn't include it like the charter says.
I think we, his motion wasn't to remove it, but to add with cause.
Right.
Is that, that correct, Vice Mayor?
We'd be altering it, which, that's an option, and the other thing, too, is that you guys could give direction to suspend any enforcement of this clause, too, and we can get around. We've done that occasionally when we've had language, difficult language in our ordinances that we don't...
I find it interesting that this has gone to a vote before the people, two times, you said? Or was it three times?
It's at least twice, because I've been through two charter reviews and we've tried both times.
And the people have voted to keep it in place, and so I, it just, hey, it's the truth, and, you know, I'm a populist, Vice Mayor, so I just would put that out there. I don't mind it. It's, it's very, like you said, it protects both parties. It gives the city the ability to repossess if necessary. Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
For the most part, just the only thing I would add is, this has been standard language for all these leaseholders, with some of these going back probably over thirty years. So this is standard language that they've always been comfortable with. I don't think there was any fear of any of the, either individuals or the association that the city would ever, I mean, of course, obviously, there's some major catastrophe or something where, you know, National Guard or some type of thing. I, I think the perception is what Vice Mayor was saying is a lot to do with is, is just working on a relationship with those leaseholders that this is standard language across the board, whether it's in the aviation community or retail lease. I mean, this is pretty standard stuff. I guess the only thing I'd add is leaving it as is until the airport committee can work on those little finite changes, so maybe making this lease agreement a little bit shorter. I think it was, is it a ten-year? Trying to remember where I saw that.
This one's, that's correct.
Ten-year. I would say maybe like a two-year, so that way it gives time for the charter review to then come back, so they're not, we're not stuck in a ten-year where that's gonna change on everybody else but them, so maybe a shorter lease agreement.
We could also add, we could add conditional language.
To the new language of what the charter review...
Right, so we could add, that just made, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Councilman Beltran. I was just thinking, when you said that, what we could do is we could add a statement in here that says, you know, unless we're, you know, unless the language changes. So we put something in that says, look, you know, as long, so long as we're obligated to put this in, we're putting it in, but...
Right, that, that they all...
If it changes, that way they don't have to go back and have it changed, because it could happen in the ten-year period, right?
That'd be a compromise.
Get a modification.
Anything that happened.
This only applies to the extent that Charter seventy-sixty-eight as written is effective or something to that.
Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments?
Mr. Tree.
Director Tree.
Director. I'm sorry. It's been a lo, it's, I've been, I've had a long day.
Yes.
Mr. Tree, how is the, the everything going on over there at, at the airport? I mean, are you communicating with those people? Everything going smooth?
Yeah, I think our relationship with our airport community is still positive. There's a lot of activity out at the airport. We've had hundreds of parachute operations going on the last week. The staff is meeting directly one-on-one with tenants to encourage them to participate in the upcoming advisory committee, so we hope to bring a list of names for your consideration. So all in all, I think it's very positive out there.
Good. I'll go with, I like what Mr. Vice Mayor said and also with Mr. Beltran said, so I'm open for whatever you guys want to do. As long as it's, it's on the, on the board, everything is, is on the transparency and up and up, we can move forward with this.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Councilman Green?
Yeah, I think, I think like Mr. Director Tree is taught, mentioning that, I think the relationship with the airport people has really improved. Would you agree with that, Mr. Tree?
I would agree with that, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think we've made some nice strides in connecting with those folks out there, and I think we're gaining their trust, so I think this, I like this, what we're currently just spoken of, and I have nothing else to add to that, but I'm in full agreement with that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Is, are we going with Julia's recommendations?
Yeah, I like the staff recommendation, and I would make a motion that we go with staff recommendation in this case.
Just so we have it clear on the record, it'll be to modify section two so that that language is in effect so long as Charter section sixty-eight remains in effect as currently stated.
So that's the way it's gonna read?
Yep.
And it's gonna be conditional so that it can be changed?
Oh, and then we, well, and we'll just say it will continue to comply with that section.
Right.
To the extent it's still in existence as, and as may be revised or something. Does that work? Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion. No other conversation, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero.
The mayor always does. It's fine. It's good, we're good.
City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is council consideration and implementation of financial assistance program for mixed metering, and I've asked Assistant City Manager Mr. Knight, Mr. Mike Knight to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan Arrow, Mayor, and members of council. The story continues. At the council meeting on March eighteenth, city council directed staff to expand the proposed irrigation meter financial assistance program, originally intended for churches to include all nonprofit organizations and commercial water accounts. This program is designed to address accounting for sewer services due to mixed metering and where landscape irrigation impacts total water use figures used for sewer charges. It was addressed to separate irrigation meters, help customers reduce sewer charges by excluding irrigation water from sewer billing. The program is structured for nonprofits funded by the general fund with no repayment required, and commercial accounts to be funded by the Water Replacement Fund with three years zero interest for repayment. The implementation tasks include creating an application form, outreach through billing, inserts, and direct contact, and tracking the program and its performance. The funding details were outlined as the general fund potentially could be impacted for the total amount of the project of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was defined in the staff report that the current funding mechanism be evaluated as the council's Special Purposes Reserve Fund, which currently has ninety-three thousand four hundred and four dollars and forty-one cents at the time of the staff report. The Water Replacement Fund could be obligated up to one point three million in evaluating sixteen hundred service accounts through the commercial classification. Council may establish this as a pilot and determine future funding levels based on the results of the numbers staff has provided today and the discussion to be had with council. The implementation and the policy and the basis of this is it aligns with the municipal code section twenty-five dash thirty-two, eight point nine, and twenty-five dash thirty-two, eight point two-one, and ordinance eighteen thirty, requiring landscape meters. It also supports ordinance nine oh one, which allows installment payments for connections, and advances the State Water Board's resolution two zero two, twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one nine, the Goals for Water Conservation and Equity. Before council tonight is consideration of implementing a financial assistance program that provides complete coverage for nonprofit organizations through the general fund with no repayment obligation and provide direction on funding amount and source. Consider a three-years, zero percent interest repayment program for commercial accounts from the Water Replacement Fund and provide direction on funding amount, and for council to direct staff to bring forth a draft resolution or resolutions at a future meeting to establish the nonprofit grant program and commercial property loan program based on council's direction tonight. Staff's available for any questions.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Knight. Bringing it back to council, Vice Mayor, you led the charge on this, but you had assistance from Councilman Beltran on bringing the idea of from the general funds, for, for the general funds, so let's go ahead and start with Councilman Beltran on this.
I guess initially I'm hesitant on some of this proposals. On the nonprofit side, the number's not too much as far as it's gonna be utilized out of the general fund. I had a big concern because this starts opening up the larger application for now commercial accounts, and the funding will come from a completely different source. This was my concern. On the nonprofit organizations, I'm not sure if that's something we're gonna set aside. Would that be from the general fund? Is that something from like the council's discretionary fund?
You're talking for the...
For the nonprofit.
Go ahead.
So, the Special Purposes Reserve Fund, which is also referred to as the council's discretionary fund, that is general fund-based, so that funding source is available. There's a little over ninety-three thousand dollars available for the rest of the fiscal year in that account, so that would be staff's recommendation if the council would like to institute a grant program, would be to institute it from that account and to select an amount. Typically, on a grant program, how you design the grant program is to select an amount of funds that you want to have in that program, and typically operate it on a first-come, first-served basis. If the council would like to do that, staff could do that, draft a resolution for those funds for council's consideration, and then at which time operate the, the grant program, market it, and then come back to council with a report on the success of the program to see if, at a point in the future, if those funds run out, with the popularity of the program, to see if additional funds would need to be contributed by the council if they so desired in the next fiscal year.
Part of the concern on that side for me is that if we utilize all of the discretionary funds, and let's say there's another couple of projects that come up, we've kind of exceeded our funding, so I don't know. My recommendation is we did this, we have ninety-three thousand right now, but we have a few more months of community events and activities of possibly maybe capping that at like seventy-five thousand and see, because we got a few more months left in this fiscal year till June, so maybe about seventy-five thousand to see what the process looks like as far as the applicants. So that's that section as far as my perspective. As far as on the commercial accounts, I have a lot of concerns with, part of what got us... Part of what got us here is the, um, rates were so low for so long that we're trying to play catch-up, and this is where we get this like 900% increases and what have you. And a, a little bit of my concern, just the way I see fiscally, trying to be fiscally conservative, is that as we're trying to get that fund back up, the, the Water Replacement Fund, is that we're already dipping into a fund that's underfunded, to then go out and help commercial properties, uh, become compliant, 'cause as stated in the report, there's nu- numerous, um, uh, ordinances or regulations that have to be met. Um, considering that these are commercial accounts, which they are for-profit businesses, I think similar to the nonprofit, um, or I should go to the church one, is that if they implement some of these out of their own pocket within, I would imagine within a fiscal year, it's, it's gonna pay for itself. Um, and so I don't like using taxpayer, uh, and this is not necessarily even taxes, these are funds that go to pay for the enterprise of the Water Replacement Fund. I don't like kind of using that funds to make a commercial, uh, property whole. Uh, it would just be another small investment for them, long-term, to actually bring down their cost of operations. So, those are two different, um, elements, that's how I see that perspective. I believe there's a little over 60 commercial accounts, so that'd take a lot of time for staff. I don't know if there's a way to send out notices to make them aware of this, but I really don't like, especially, let's say it ends up close to a million dollars that we're gonna be taking out of this, uh, Water Replacement Fund at a zero percent interest. I don't know what that looks like in three years, that now, we're even further behind than what we're trying to get. Um, with the nonprofits and churches, I'm willing to, let's, let's work with those smaller organizations. Um, I'm just, I have a concern, because once we open up that to the nonprofits, we had to for the commercial, so. Uh, there's always a concern when we offer, um, I guess, uh, tax, uh, revenues to be utilized in all these different ways. Unintended consequences, I guess. So, the nonprofit, I, I think, I think that's something we could really work with, so I'd love to hear what the rest of council feels like on the second part. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Yeah, great comments. Um, I share some of your concerns, I think on the commercial accounts, it might be wise to do it as a pilot, and just do 30%, just so we ease into it, so we can see what the response is. Because I think the, the premise here is really important, and that's landscaping. And the commercial side, we may not have a need, and so it probably won't be that much. Even though this is a, you know, could-be number, it probably won't be that much. And it, and we're seeing that with the data in the churches, because out of all the churches, it's only, what, less than, less than a third or less than a fourth of the churches that really have this.
Seventeen churches, but 12 that are majorly impacted.
So, I think that we're, we're rectifying the situation, and I, I like that we're doing this right away, and I, I really wanna express some urgency, because these churches are, the ones that are being impacted the most are losing about $400 a month in the summer. And, you know, that's 5,000 bucks a year, so the sooner we get the, the remedy for the churches on that side, the ones that are being, um, hurt, I think, the better. But I think when we add in the commercial accounts, if we went in as a pilot program and just started, 'cause it's not taxpayers' money used, it's taxpayers' money we're lending out and getting back, so. Yeah.
Well, it does fit the.
Yeah, I would just say we would cut that down and do it as a pilot, and then if we get the, if we, the point I'm making, Ray, is, is that I think that if we saw a demand for it, then we could consider going back to the well, and if we don't see a demand for it, then we could return it back. I did wanna ask a question, Michael, thanks for laying this out. This ca- this became a much bigger thing than we thought it was gonna be. But, you know, the more we dug, the more we found, so I think it's, it's fixing a great problem. It says in here, the, we're just giving an estimated cost for one and a half inch, but two inches of possibility too. It's gonna depend on the site, right?
Yeah, we, we really went as an average to try to give council a perspective of what it looked like, and, and so that, that's where that calculation came from.
Well, it's very well laid out and very well thought out. I think it, it hits all of the areas, and it gives us the urgency to take care of the nonprofits and the churches first, the ones that are being hurt the most and they're most, um, vulnerable to this. Um, I also think, and I would just make one final statement, I would like to continue using the Special Purpose Reserve Fund for the council, for Special Purpose Reserve, and I would motion that we fully fund this at 150,000 out of the general fund for the churches, and do it as soon as possible.
Okay, uh, we have a motion on the, the table. Uh, Councilman Rivas, you have any comments?
I like both, um, opinions on, on how to work this, so, um, I know there's, uh, the, the nonprofit that really needs, those churches really need help, and the commercial need help, but I recommend, well, I'm not gonna recommend. I'm just going to, um, see how the, all this plays out, but we need to do something real quick that it doesn't break the bank, so to speak, and I think, uh, 30% is a, is a wise, uh, threshold, so. Uh, I'd like to see how we're gonna move forward with this, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll play it out as, as it, as it comes, so.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Councilman Green, any comments?
Uh, just asking how long, think this might, might run this thing, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, based on the data, um, the way I read it, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the way I read it, we're probably gonna overfund it a little bit at 150K.
Uh-huh.
But if we fix all the severe issues before the summer, then it'll be over, and it ends.
So, just a few months and?
Hopefully, but we don't know what the demand's gonna be, but we know that the, the expense is gonna go up sharply in the next month or so, so we wanna get in front of it. And I think that Ray's, uh, Councilman Beltran's, um, suggestion on the 30% on the commercial side is fair, and I think it'll be adequate, because that might go on longer.
Yeah.
And we have to be careful that we don't overfund that, 'cause I don't think you'll have the demand for that, quite frankly, but.
Wouldn't think.
We'll see.
We'll see, yeah.
And, and I was mistaken when I said 17 churches earlier, it's 12 churches.
I, I, excuse me, sir, I have one question for Mr. Knight. Uh, after hearing what, what the council's discussed, Mr. Knight, what's your professional opinion on all this?
I was hoping to be able to provide comment before the second was given, but. I, I, it's all great conversation, I think there's a couple different ways that we could go about this, and, and different points have been brought up. Uh, we realize that it's a short time before the end of the fiscal year. Um, and so, yes, we see reduced funds in the Special Purposes Account, um, and we don't know how many people are going to be eager to, to participate in either one of these programs. So I'd like to take it in two, in two. I would actually like, you know, council to consider it in, in two resolutions. Uh, I would like to bring it back to you in two resolutions, instead of putting them both together. It would make it easier and cleaner, uh, for future processes. So, handling one, the nonprofits first. So, in, in the accounts that I've provided previously, so you have 12, roughly 12 accounts, um, I think there's probably 10 in there that you could prioritize, as what I would classify for a facility that is, um, has small amount of usage as far as a couple days a week with high consumption, and that's how I would prioritize that. I think you could look at a smaller amount for the initial phase of this, and say, rather than doing the full 150,000, if we look at a smaller bite, whether it's 50, 60, or the recommendation of 75, um, is, is going into this program and, and getting it started, and prior, directing staff to prioritize these, these groups of nonprofits that are immediately impacted. And let's see how fast that turns around, and how fast we, we get the participation, and then how fast we can address the, the request, right? So, uh, we do have a city that's, you know, demand is gonna start picking up, uh, come May and June, and you're gonna, you're gonna have water issues, you're gonna have things that we're working on. So it is a labor force challenge as well, I'm not saying we can't do it, um, we can, we can do it. It's just a matter of, it's gonna have to be managed in a way for the implementation. So, as, as far as, and I appreciate council's eagerness to address the whole issue, but I think with the scheduling of the new budget, um, and with the ability to get an immediate response, if we just have some capital, right, that's gonna give us the ability to respond, that'll get the initial program started, and then we can report back to council, like, hey, if you gave us 50 grand or 60 grand to initiate this, this project, that, hey, we used it all up in the first two months, we need to look at this, and then that gives a little bit of, on, on both sides. It gives us the ability to program future monies and look and see how that can be done. Uh, quite honestly, that's probably the biggest challenge in consideration, pulling these funds from the, the general fund budget, and then gives us the ability to have that communication with the nonprofits and, and their willingness to participate.
So, on, on that note, Mr. Knight, I, I'd also like to say, as we look at the, the general fund as it's stated, so, the general fund is the, essentially overarching fund type, it is the, the color of the, the bunny. Um, so those are our local dollars. So, as we look at this, um, the budget that was adopted for this current fiscal year, there hasn't been funds appropriated that are in excess, that are, um, unallocated for such, at $150,000. So, there is the $100,000 annually that's appropriated for the Special Purposes Fund. So, in looking at kind of the, the other option, um, should be, i- if council so chooses, the only other option that, that I see is the council could appropriate out of Measure I funds. Now, we historically have used Measure I funds for public safety, roads, and parks. Uh, so I just wanted to, to note that. But in, in looking at this, as Mr. Knight said, um, if you wanted to appropriate our funds out of, um, uh, say that the Special Purposes Funds at a smaller amount to get it started, then through your next budget, if you wanted to include funds in that budget to especially appropriate funds for that, you could, uh, make funds available that way. Staff will have to, to work to, try to, to make that work in the budget.
City Manager, I, I have a suggestion, and, and I, I'm the only one up here that voted no on this rate increase, where we raised the rates 974% on 501s or commercial buildings, but ultimately impacting the churches at 974%. We do have emergency funds. Are we able to?
So, our, our reserve funds are broken up into two types, there is an emergency catastrophic fund, and staff evaluated that. Uh, we could bring that back, um, through my initial evaluation, as well as the, the Director of Finance, didn't see that this met the, the conditions for the use of those funds. The other option of our reserve fund, a reverse, broke up into two types that were adopted by ordinance. The other type is for a budget stabilization, and so that essentially is if the revenues, um, decline rapidly, essentially in, in a fashion that's unpredictable for your budget. So if you adopted a budget with an assumption that your revenues were gonna be at a certain level, then the revenues came in decreased, and you weren't able to have the revenues to cover your adopted budget, then the council with a four-fist vote can appropriate funds out of that reserve fund, uh, to cover that. So those are the, the, the two basic reserve funds that, that the city has, that is set up for a rainy day. So one is for, um, you know, catastrophic emergency events such as floods, you know, earthquakes, uh, fires, any unforeseen, uh, type of situation there. Um, then the other one is for budget stabilization.
Thank you, City Manager, and, uh, as, as we go through, I haven't had an opportunity to speak. I, I'm, I'm against using our council discretionary spending. Um, I think we should keep that for the ability to do certain projects in our community. Um, I'm actually working with American Legion, and I'll be leaning on you guys in the future. With that, question on the commercial availability at zero percent interest for irrigation meter. We do this for sewage and water connections, is, is that correct, uh, Assistant City Manager?
So essentially what I was going to, so we talked about the nonprofit, but then go to the commercial side, is, is, I don't know that we need to encumber a expenditure directly for this at this point in time. I, I think the program already exists. Um, if somebody wants to utilize the program, they have access to the program. I, I, we can still have the communication, make them aware of the program. This resolution were, I would say, at, at this portion, we would just have a resolution identifying the interest rate on the loan, uh, for, for this specific service, and so if council says, hey, it's a zero percent interest for three years, that's the resolution I'm gonna put forward, because the program already exists, I'm not creating a program that doesn't already.
So, thank you for that clarification, and that's what I was looking forward to getting out. So it's not something that we gotta create, there's not a new will here, it's there, we just gotta give direction if we're gonna do the zero percent interest.
So through the process we're talking now, you would tell me that, hey, how much is it gonna cost? I'm gonna tell you it could cost 1.3 million dollars, and then I have to set that money aside, which could hinder other projects.
Okay, so if we, but in all reality, not everyone's gonna need this. So, y- your evaluation is, is high. Uh, but I like the idea of possibly setting a, a, uh, threshold, as Councilman Rivas stated, you know, 25, 30%. Uh, what does, what do you think that looks like?
I would have to do a actual address-by-address evaluation to give you a complete summary. This is based off of going through accounts and what's available in account data. So I would have to do a complete evaluation based on conditions, sidewalk conditions, you know, is it gonna require additional taps, is it manifolds, you know, what are those type of things? That's where I, like I said, I feel safe if we just stick within the process we have, but then give, have council give us the direction of what the interest rate should be for that program.
And I, I just, I'm almost done here. Uh, it fits the agenda of the city for water conservation is the way of life, and improves water use efficiency. Um, it's the right direction to go, it's just the, what, what way we wanna go about it. We also need to discuss what budget, if we are gonna do something for the nonprofits in our community, what budget we are gonna pull from. You heard, uh, City Manager, uh, state some options, which is council discretionary spending, Measure I, which is historically used for roads and public safety, and then somewhat a talk of emergency funds, but that's not really suitable. And then the budget stabilization, which could possibly be used in this situation. If we're giving direction to spend monies that aren't there, then you would need to pull from that fund to stabilize a budget.
So, in theory, the council could create a situation to which the budget stabilization fund may have to be used prior to the end of the fiscal year.
How much is in the stabilization budget?
So the budget stabilization fund is based on 15% of the general fund. So our general fund operations is around, you know, 35 million dollars. Um, and so that is maintained at 15%, and the emergency catastrophic fund is maintained at 10%. How that works is with the adoption of the budget each year, that fund is then made whole as part of that budget, to have that reserve for a rainy day, should the economy, um, falter. And, and that way it provides the city on a stable footing to be able to operate and, uh, perform essential services. Uh, over the many years, even through the downturn in the last recession, um, the fiscal conservative, you know, um, city has been able to maintain all operations and services um, through all those times, and this is, was derived after that time by the city council to maintain that.
Yeah, the, the, this city has done a great job of being fiscal conservative on the budget. Uh, so around 3.5 million in the stabilization budget, you said 15%?
Fi- 15%, so I can do, do the math, it's, oh, is it 10%? It would be three and a half, about $7 million?
Oh, I was way off, I should go back to school, huh?
Let me see.
Okay.
Hold on and do it.
So just to get an idea, I, I'm looking forward to when we have the budget study session, so we could start.
Five and a quarter million.
Oh, okay. Hey, my first number was closer, Mr. Reddinger.
It was, I, I was doing 20%.
Okay, um, so just, there's some further clarification. I've, I've talked him with Assistant City Manager Knight. Um, each hookup is gonna cost around $5,000. So, it, just in reality of the cost, just the over, the counter cost is the 1,680. So it's something else that we have to consider. Um, you know? You know, we raised the rates nine hundred and seventy-four percent and there's been a great impact on our churches in our community and and nonprofits. And it's something that I I do care about and I'd like to fix in this city. So is there any other comments?
Well, I think that we're talking all the way from one end to practical to catastrophic. The reality is, you know, with the church fix here, if it's something similar, Michael, with the landscaping on the commercial, that means it's going to be less than twenty percent of the thirteen, one point three million. So I think it's even not going to hit the this this budget that much, even if you do it at thirty percent. But I I want to make clear that if you take these numbers, even on face value at seventeen and five thousand apiece, we we've collected ninety thousand dollars from our churches already in twenty twenty-four. And now it goes in a different bucket because it's a different color of money and it's not in the budget properly. And that's why we're going to study that a little bit more. But this fixes the problem before summer for those churches. And it puts that money back where it belongs, even though we have to do some accounting. We are going to do the right thing for our churches and that's where I want to finish up there. And if I if we pull back, Michael, if I compromise and say a hundred K, it should cover the catastrophic ones and then we can come back to the well. My only fear is that it takes time, maybe a couple of meetings to go back and fund it. If we're in the middle of summer and everybody's leaking money, I don't want that to happen.
Well, then with the twelve churches, the priorities, that would be sixty thousand dollars. And then also we got to talk about what we want to give direction on prioritizing. As the Assistant City Manager stated, we can only handle so much in a workload. So we can't tell them to go fix all the commercials and the nonprofits. The manpower just isn't there. So I think as Assistant City Manager Knight recommended, as far as two resolutions in prioritizing, it needs to be a direction tonight on what we want to do, what's reality.
Well, we already did it first and a second. Can I start over or do we got to?
No, you you never.
I want to start over.
You want to amend your motion.
I may amend that motion and let's, I would just say, let's separate the two things. We'll make the grant program for the churches and we'll fund it from the general fund at a hundred thousand dollars to make sure we got enough and make that the highest priority and separate it from the commercial.
Just on the on the motion, nonprofits?
Yes, nonprofits only. I thought I said that churches.
Yeah, nonprofits.
Okay, and so then also just specifically, so general fund, are we talking measure I? Are we talking special purposes? Are we talking trying of bringing back a change to the ordinance on either the catastrophic or the stabilization? There's a lot of ways to do this, but we just kind of need direction on what you guys want to see.
Okay, so I'm, I don't want to use the council discretionary spending. What we don't spend ends up going back into the budget, the general fund budget for next year.
So how that operates is, say, you know, the the council, for example, if you spend ten thousand dollars this fiscal year, through the budget process, that will be replenished to be a to have a hundred thousand dollars available with the next fiscal year. So if you spend a hundred thousand dollars this year, the general, through the general fund budget adoption process, the council would consider reestablishing that budget back at a full hundred thousand dollars. So this i- is the the cleanest mechanism. The other option, as Ms. Lou indicated, staff could bring back information for you to review the emergency catastrophic fund and the budget stabilization fund to establish if you believe that that meets the merits of use of those funds. It's very specific how the ordinance was drafted in protection of those funds. They both require a forfeit vote or the council could direct staff to bring back ordinance amendment for those funds. But I would urge to to have caution with that is that is provides the fiscal stability for the city.
Yeah, and I don't want to change the forfeit vote. If if this is a direction we want to go in, then it needs to be all or nothing. I I don't think we change what's been historical in the past. I I don't want to spend measure I funds. That's roads and public safety. We want to continue building our roads. We want to continue to support our first responders. The discretionary spending is the ability for us to spend. I'm open to conversation on the budget stabilization, which would take a forfeit vote and we leave the emergency funds. Do you have comments?
Yeah, I I just don't want to touch the emergency catastrophic fund. I don't want to touch that.
Okay. And so getting to a motion, your motion earlier just for clarification, we're we're, well, we need to bring that back then, Mr. Reidenhauer?
Yes, if council, whatever the the council decides tonight, so be it that you would like for staff to bring back an item for the council's consideration of utilizing the budget stabilization fund, that would have to be brought back. Or even if you wanted to use the special purposes reserve fund, that would have to be back, that would have to be brought back too as a specific item. So the funding of this would need to be brought back, just seeking direction on how the council would like to to see that. If you would like, I could bring back an item with this that you that outlines what the the ordinance states on that budget stabilization as well as what it states on the the special purposes reserve fund for council's review for you at that point to make that determination.
It was going to come back anyways because we're doing, we're bringing back the resolution on the program. So we could, we could, the the funding doesn't have to be decided tonight, but we want as much clarity as possible so that we can get something, like you said, you wanted it to go into effect quickly. So in order to get it implemented, like to have your implementing resolution next one, we would need really to figure out this funding specifically at that point.
Okay, so I I love that recommendation. Thank you for the clarification. And then we're capping it at a thirty percent off of the water enterprise?
No, the thirty percent's on the commercial side.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. So two separate resolutions. We cap it at thirty percent. Is that doable, Assistant City Manager Knight?
Yeah, that'll work. I I was just hoping not to not to encumber a cost on the budget that, you know, could potentially shift planning for other projects and just allow us to work it out on the interested parties. But that's what council desires. That's what I will do.
I I I appreciate that recommendation. Can you clarify it just a little more?
So essentially just provide direction on moving forward with the interest rate on the the water, the water replacement fund. That'll be the funding source. Move forward with zero percent interest as directed and we will go to work on that. And then I just don't want to encumber one point three million in the.
By 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 doing it in in this fashion, the what will drive it is the interest in it. So you won't preencumber the funds, so it will remain there for use for capital projects. And then also would allow the commercial properties, if they wanted to utilize the the program, to utilize it. And so then the funding would just be utilized as they come in, not be preencumbered.
So from my understanding, we don't need to take a vote tonight. We're giving direction on these. They'll come back.
That'll, that's fine. I think that's sufficient.
Okay, does staff have enough for direction? Are there, before we move on, are there any other comments from the council?
The only thing I was going to add was going back to the to the nonprofit one. Just because the the fiscal year is only three more months and just doing some rough math, it's looking at like maybe thirty thousand dollars or something. So getting to the number of a hundred thousand, right now it's technically only ninety-three thousand dollars available. So I would just try to bring that back down to more like, you know, again, maybe forty or fifty thousand just for the first few, three months until the next, because we do this again in July and say we're putting another fifty thousand in.
Can we make it contingent that if it runs out, that we can refund it? Or we can do it quickly. So if we did it in increments, then I just don't want to have multiple meetings to try to fund this again.
Well, you're talking about using discretionary spending?
No, no.
That's what he's talking about.
I'm talking about using discretionary funds.
And just for a rough number, the twelve churches times five thousand dollars would be sixty thousand dollars.
Well, but it's not at the five thousand. That's what it costs the city, but that's not what we're charging them.
No, I, yeah, but the cost is still to the city. So if we're going to fund it, we have to fund the full sixty.
The overall why, what I'm bringing all this to is the four months that this new council's been here, I'm I'm adding this all up. We're close to a million dollars we've been spending that hasn't been allocated from last year's funding. And we're moving at a high click of spending money that's coming from things that are already allocated. So I'm trying to just slow it down. I I want to fund it. If we have to come back next month and do this, it'll take two minutes. Hey, we ran out of money. Let's allocate another ten thousand.
Cool.
We do it again. It literally take us two or three minutes to do that. I'd rather do those small bites than dedicate all the funding and then if something else comes up, we we have no more discretionary funds for.
Yeah, and we haven't spent a million dollars out of the general fund. That's your, there's some funny math there.
I'd also state that you're the only person up here that voted to raise the rates nine hundred and seventy-four percent on the churches. So this is a.
Not just on churches, on everybody.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Because if not, it'd be a lot worse.
Okay, so with that, we've given some direction.
So ma- make sure that the staff understands the the direction. So we're going to bring back draft resolutions in two forms. So one form on the commercial side, and what I I'm hearing is we had discussion, but I haven't heard direction passed that you would like to encumber thirty percent of what that one point three. Are you now good with?
With staff recommendation on on?
Well, I appreciate that.
The will is already there. Let's continue with it.
So we will bring a draft resolution back that sets the interest rate at zero percent for the commercial program. On the nonprofit program, we will bring back an item with consideration of the use of the budget stabilization fund as well as in the staff report with the explanation of what the the ordinance that established that budget stabilization fund and the requirements there too, as well as we'll have draft resolutions to be able to utilize that fund as well as to be able to utilize the special purposes reserve fund. And at that point, council can make the decision on the funding they want to use.
That sounds great to me. We got both options in the next meeting. It sounds like the right direction.
Question on the dollar amount for the resolution, is it a hundred thousand? That was the the last number that was given and discussed. Just trying to figure out what the number is.
If we have the ability to quickly refill the fund, it doesn't need to be a hundred thousand. We could start it at sixty here.
Well, I would, I would say nothing moves quickly with the government.
That's why I said a hundred. So Michael's trying to convince me.
The twelve churches at five thousand dollars apiece, which is what is going to cost the city roughly. So let's go with a hundred.
Okay.
We we know that it's going to cost us roughly sixty million.
Let's go with a hundred.
I just wanted to clarify on the dollar amount.
Thank you for the clarification. So we've given some direction. Okay, we'll move on to gen, uh, schedule matter number thirty-two.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is the consideration for the continuation of the Zero Fair Program and I've asked Mr. Tree to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhauer. Honorable mayor, city council members. This item is a request for council's direction on the future of the city's Zero Fair Program for public transit. The program was first implemented in June of two thousand twenty-four to support our transition to in-house transit operations and has since been extended twice. It's currently set to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. The Zero Fair Program has had a significant positive impact. Fixed route ridership is up over seventy-four percent and dial-a-colt ridership, which is door-to-door service for seniors and disabled, has more than doubled compared to the previous year. In in total, the service, we provided two hundred and seventy thousand free rides to date. That's an extremely large number that we're proud of. However, with the expected reductions in state and federal funding, we now need to consider whether to continue or phase out the program. Some considerations, if continued, the staff has identified the city's LC top allocation, which is low-carbon transit operation program funding, in which we receive about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Establishing a fare-free program is an eligible project under that funding source. However, it with a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, it's only able to partially fund a fare-free service beyond June thirtieth. If the program is discontinued, staff will return to council with options for a fare collection system equipped, which includes equipment and software technology with a commitment to coordinate with regional partners toward and in an effort to have a unified fare system. So where we're at is that the city council consider the future of the Zero Fair Program and take the following actions. One, provide direction on whether to continue or conclude or to conclude the Zero Fair Program beyond the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five date. If the program is continued, direct staff to utilize the city's fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five LC top allocation of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand to support the a short-term continuation of fare-free service. Or three, if the program is discontinued, direct staff to work with regional partners in support of a long-term goal for a unified regional fare collection and return at a future city council meeting with an item for consideration regarding fare collection equipment and digital, mobile and digital fare payment technology. That's the conclusion of staff's report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Tree. We'll bring it back to council. Councilman Reeves, any comments?
Not at the, not at this time. Let me review this a little bit.
Vice Mayor McCurvy.
The LC top funds, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, what's the shortcoming going to be next year? If it's going to, is it going to come up short then, right?
Yes, sir. For, so for example, if we were to extend the fare-free program another twelve months, it, we would be short about four hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
However, it could fund a short-term program for us to give us time to transition to a unified fare structure that the other transit providers would agree upon. But it's three months and there would be a lot of work to do to to come together and agree on a on a fare collection system.
So four hundred and some odd thousand dollars for a whole year. So roughly a little less than a half a year, we could use those funds. Can we use those funds for anything else?
You can. It it's geared, eligible projects are geared around reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So the purchase of zero emission vehicles is is an eligible project. Another, other modes of service such as bike sharing, scooter sharing, where it's not contributing to greenhouse gas, but it's giving community residents a way to get around town.
Like bikes?
Yes, like bikes.
So we could use this money to, instead of doing zero fares, we could put bikes down on the parkway?
Yes, sir, or downtown.
Or downtown. How much is one of those projects?
We are gathering some initial information. I think a a commercial bike is around five thousand dollars apiece. There are some, if if we go that route, we will definitely bring back a staff report and outline some of the considerations as far as using the funds for a capital purchase, the bikes and lockable kiosks versus using the money for staff to manage the the project. Another eligible project is expanded transit service. So it can't fund existing service, but if you were going to create a new route, it would pay for that as well.
Could it be a temporary route?
It could be, yes. The short answer is yes.
Just curious about this. Thank you for answering those questions so quickly. You got it right on the top of your mind. You're like, man. I was just thinking about that other discussion we had a couple of months ago about, you know, getting people out to the to the sports center for the event in July or doing something downtown for a holiday. You know, those would be a special route and we could turn those on for a month or or a few weeks or whatever they are. But that would, it'd be eligible for those kind of funds. Now, I'll go back around because I don't think we're going to do that in this meeting. But the ridership and the LC, or the funds that we could get, if we keep the the ridership up, we can get more funds. But you're saying those funds may not be there.
So there is a component.
So there is a component, when, with federal funding, there's a component on how the city's allocation is, is calculated. We originally had evaluated this a, a year ago and based on the information that we had at that time, increasing the ridership could potentially increase our federal amount. However, we would not see that investment in increasing the ridership for two years. We have evaluated a little bit further and I think the increase in, in federal funds is, is marginal. There, there are very strict calculations that we need to meet to, to really see that, an increase in federal funds. I would say staff is comfortable that with the increase in, in rides, it's, it's a net zero where the increase in federal funds is, is, is paying for those lost funds by providing a, a free fare program.
Mr. City Manager, when we spoke this week, we talked about this being a two-year cycle.
Correct.
Could you clarify that? I thought that we had another year, but this is going to end this year.
Correct. And so the, the funding cycle that Mr. Tree is speaking about has been the, the prior two years. So the ending, and so this would be is looking at if the, the council wanted to continue with free fares for another full year. The look back would be the two years for the funding cycle to be a year from this start of this fiscal year. So instead, it would be the '26, '27 fiscal year is my understanding.
Okay. So we're going to come up with a half year?
So yeah, so essentially if, that would be the, the discussion, how looking at this and, you know, there is a lot of conversations and things in flux at the federal level right now and with the different departments and with the FTA. So it's a constant evaluation. Staff can't guarantee that the calculations that'll be used a year from now for federal funding are the same as what they historically have been. We've seen lots of different proposals that have been floated out, out there. And so looking at it, the council could extend this just on the baseline of what the LC top funds would, would afford to, to not hit the system and as we continue to evaluate the system and evaluate the, the effectiveness and the efficiency of, of the funding of that. Make, make some decisions as we move along, as we've scheduled a public hearing tonight to, to look at that. That could, that could offset some of those as well. So and just also to encapsulate this, we're really speaking of the traditional transit and tonight at the free fares, the micro-transit does still have, have fares. And so as we calculate those fares, we have to make sure that we, we separate that as, as that looks a, a little bit different. But long answer, but I just wanted to provide that information.
No, it was a great answer. I'm following you all the way and I've just, I started thinking some other thoughts too, and I'll, I'll bounce back over here to Richard. Director Tree, I love the idea of the bikes. It's probably a little early to have that discussion, but I like the idea of maybe using up what funds we have in the LC top. And I want to ask you this question. We're talking about consolidating a couple of routes to save some money. What is the impact of us consolidating those two routes on, possibly on this decision?
I, I think in, in my personal opinion, we're, we have a tough decision where we're, we're we're potentially cutting service and then for those that have service, they're going to get a free ride. In my, that's, I think that's the dilemma that we're faced and I don't particularly want to put the council in that position. However, there is, there is benefit to the community and where they're receiving a fair, free ride. So to your point, if in the event that it's decided that we consolidate or eliminate potential Route 4 and 6 altogether, the remaining routes, the, the fare-free program could be extended a little bit farther, meaning that money, there's going to be more rides to go towards the remaining routes. So instead of three months, which we estimate 177,000 would provide, maybe it's four months or, or five. We could run that analysis, but.
Okay. So generally speaking, if we started working on a fare program now, when that money runs out, we'll have a fare program that we could put in place. And then we would have to figure out how to, to offset the seasonal usage on those routes or using a different mode altogether, like a direct transit or something.
And we'll have that public hearing May 6.
And then another option to, to, for the council to consider on, on the, the fares, if the council would like to move away from a, a fare-free system, you could direct staff to, to initiate, to be able to accept fares and get the, the equipment to accept cash fares. So we can move to cash fares in a relative speaking quickly and more cost-effectively. And then at the same time, work with our regional partners as we come together with a, a shared system. The city of Porterville oftentimes is a, as a leader in this and we could lead the, lead the charge in going out and, and pursuing to bring those under contract with the council's authority there. To then bring, so everybody else could then piggyback on those contracts. So there's multiple options here. You can continue with the free fares for a, a short time period. While we work with our, our partners to get that, that regional. We could start accepting cash fares starting July 1. And then allocate these LC top funds to, to another project. And then work with the regional partners and bring back the, more of a, a digital, modern way of accepting fares that would be the same across the county. That's, that's the, the vision with our, with the partners. Or, or the council could direct us tonight to just move forward with, you know, moving to fares with us going out to, to RFP for all the process to get a digital system now.
You know, Vice Mayor, you, okay, you, you owned it. I, I would just concerns with the talk of using the, the LCT or LC top funds to buy bikes or scooters with one-time money. How do you continue funding it in the future? It sounds great to have, you know, electric scooters along those trails. I just worry about funding it in the future if we went and made that purchase. I like the recommendation there by our city manager. Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
Yeah, being on the TCRTA committee, transportation is a tricky animal, especially when you're relying on county or state and federal funding. My perspective is since we've already have done this for one year and we've seen those riderships increase, what, 74%? And 101%. Although the state and especially federal funding mechanisms might be changed in this area not significantly is kind of what I feel is going to happen. And so I think we've made this investment this far that it would be wise, especially and thank you, Vice Mayor, you brought some great points. If we're going to consolidate or eliminate a couple of other routes, that this would give us a little more breathing room to, to look at the RFPs for whether it's the cash or especially the regional programs or process we are for collecting funds. My opinion is I believe this would be a good investment going forward to just keep those numbers up, especially going into summer. I believe these riderships can go up. And so I, I like the continuation of that. And then we could reevaluate this potentially June, July to see where we are in the ridership. And then again with Director Tree getting some numbers as far as what the fare system is going to look like. And I do appreciate knowledge a little bit with TCRTA. Porterville is looked at as kind of the leader at, at, at least at that point back then of whether it's previous staff or with Director Tree, who was actually the director of the organization at the time. Whatever Porterville uses is probably going to be what everybody else uses. So I like that he's very knowledgeable in that and he'll find a system that's going to work. Not only just financially, but just long-term with everybody else. So I like the the continuation of the Zero Fair. I think just getting those riderships up is looking great on the application process for it, for funding back credits, I guess.
Councilmember, if I may, on, on your, your comment about timeframe, instead of June or July, what we're speaking about tonight is the current Zero Fair Program is through council's direction was through June 30th. So through June, to start July 1. So if you wanted to look at a few more months of this, what we'd be looking at is bringing an item back in the September timeframe. That would, that would be, we're just trying to be ahead of this to not put the council in a situation to have to make a decision with, with a time limit backed on them. So we are looking forward of how we can do that. And so and just want to make sure on my statement about like the, the regional fare system, the city staff is not of the mindset to pick a, a regional fare system that everybody else then must join. We want to work with them, that it's a collective, that it is the fare system that, that everybody wants to use, then to move forward in that manner.
Right. I think they, I, I guess my, my statement was kind of I misstated was, is more that we are familiar with doing that process versus the other agencies. And so, yeah, I like that six-month timeframe to come back and, and look at it.
It sounds like we're, we're in agreeance in a direction. Councilman Green, do you have any comments?
Nothing to add at this time.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We do, we need to make a motion on this, correct? Or do we just give him direction on this issue?
Do need some direction as far as extending the fare-free program past the June 30th.
And spending the LC top funds. So, so going with staff recommendation, number one, provide direction on that. So that's what we want to go with. We're going to continue with free ridership. We're going to utilize the LC top funds. And then we're going to reevaluate in, I, I think you said six months in September-ish?
Correct. And Mr. Tree, does that work for you, September?
I think we probably want to be a month ahead of that.
August?
Yeah, just because I, we anticipate the 177,000 would only be three months.
Okay, so we'll consider August.
And then we have the public hearing May 6 to look at the routes for transit as well. So we'll, we'll have that and then we'll, you'll really get to see what the numbers are going to look like in the future once staff gets direction on the routes.
Yeah, and then just, just to inform you, with, with your direction, at the next city council meeting, we'll bring for your consideration a resolution to use LC top funds, direct the transportation director to sign the grant documents and, and then we'll submit that grant.
Okay, there's the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. No other conversation. We'll call for the vote. Pass is 5-0. Okay, City Manager, schedule matter number 33.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is amendment to the consultant services contract for the emergency operations center. I've asked Mr. Javier Sanchez to present this item.
Thank you, Director Sanchez.
All right. Let me get this pulled up here. Thank you, Mr. Reddinger. Members of council. At its meeting on November 5th, 2024, the city council authorized the execution of a consultant service agreement with Core Design Group, or Core in short, for the design of the emergency operations center and public safety headquarters, which was to be located within Centennial Plaza across the street from City Hall. In an effort to best utilize available budget funds, staff reevaluated the planned projects for public safety to determine if any changes or adjustments could be made to help ensure the timely delivery of the required improvements. During that review, it was determined that adjustments could potentially be made to the planned addition of Fire Station 71 to allow for the incorporation of the components of an emergency operating center or EOC. Staff met with the contracted design team for both the EOC project and addition of Station 1 to see what was possible. The discussion also included the need to complete some improvements at Centennial Plaza, even though the EOC would be moving as a building currently has two vacant tenant spaces that are virtually unusable for staff needs, which are the physical therapy space and the restaurant space. Let me see. Staff was able to negotiate an amended consultant service agreement with Core for the design of the needed improvements for Station 71, the EOC, and an add alternate cost for Centennial Plaza. The amended agreement includes the addition of Station 71 with incorporation, excuse me, with the incorporation of the components of an EOC. Modifications to the remodel of Station 71 to include a drive-through engine bay. The amount of the portion of the contract for the improvements related to Station 71 for design and construction support is $1,140,250. The amount of the add alternate for the design of the remodel of the two spaces at Centennial Plaza is $55,000. With that remodel of those two spaces, with it not having to be in the essential services level, would require very little structural improvements to the building and the work could potentially help them provide the needed additional staff spaces for the police department. Contracting with Core for the design work could provide an overall savings as their team is already very familiar with that building and has already completed initial research and analysis of the structure instead of paying another firm to do so. The add alternate work would not begin until the details of what was needed for each space was agreed upon. An additional $114,025 is necessary for design contingencies and staff time for management of the contract. Funding for the Station 71 slash EOC portion of the amended contract is provided by an OES grant that's approved in the 24-25 fiscal year budget funding. And for the Centennial Plaza portion, that contract is available through Measure I funds. It's recommended that city council authorize the engineering director to execute the consultant service agreement for the design of Station 71 and EOC Center project with, and remodel of Centennial Plaza with Core design in the amount of $1,140,000, Authorize a design contract contingency in the amount of $114,025. Provide direction to staff on whether the add alternate portion of the contract for the future design work at Centennial Plaza should be included. And if so, authorize Measure I funds in the amount of $60,500 to cover added work and contingency and authorize progress payments up to 100% of the contract amount. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Sanchez. I'd just like to state, this is some funds that we need to spend. It's going to be bringing the EOC or upgrades for our police department and some upgrades for our fire department. I think this is great recommendations from our staff in the right direction to take. But I'd open, and so I, I guess I'd start with a motion just because we have a couple more items to go ahead with staff recommendation. But if there's any other comments, I'm, I'm open. The mic's yours, gentlemen.
I, I just have one question for Director Sanchez. We're going to be able to break ground this summer on this?
No. So this, this authorization is to go into full-blown design for the past year since the, or since the last authorization. We've had a conceptual plan, several layouts to be vetted before fire and police departments. And once we had that feedback from those departments, then that's when we authorized a design contract back in November. And now the recommendations are modify that. So design process probably 15 months?
Oh, wow.
10? Okay. So about a year is when we'd be able to talk about.
Let me just make sure I understand. Station 71, end of '26. Right? Over a year?
Right.
But Station 72 sooner, right?
Correct. That's in the budget.
That one, we already have the money for, right? And we just have to do the design. So we, will we break ground on Station 72 and those changes?
So Station 72 design is pretty much complete. And so before the, the council in the next budget cycle would be to fund the construction or the, the, the construction portion of that remodel. Estimated to be four and a half million dollars. Estimated to be four and a half million dollars. Um, uh, we were trying to get some federal funding for it, and it looks like those opportunities, uh, may not be available. And so, um, staff will be seeking to fund that at a Measure I. That's what it was previously in the CIP for.
Okay, thank you, Jason. I just, from the meetings and the readings I had, I thought we were breaking ground on something this summer.
Breaking ground on, so that the plan would be to break ground on Seventy-Two this summer? Um, and then after the completion of Seventy-Two, the timing should work out that at that point Seventy-One with the EOC design would be complete. To then be able to go out to bid, issue contract, and break ground on the remodel of Seventy-One. So that we could roll in having Seventy-Two complete, then be under construction of Seventy-One. Um, it would not be ideal to have both, uh, fire stations to be under construction at the same time.
Thank you, Jason, for the clarification. Thank you, Director Sanchez, appreciate it. I'm, this is a good thing.
I love the urgency, Vice Mayor. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one question, Mr. Sanchez. What are we going to do with the open, those two rooms in Centennial Plaza?
So, right now, they're pretty large, open spaces. One has that, uh, physical therapy pool. So as it stands, we can't do anything with it. So that was the suggestion, is to, uh, do a remodel to, um, create those unusable spaces, you know, office spaces, meeting rooms. Uh, and then we'll complete the design, and then if council so chooses to move forward on construction, we can do that at a future date.
So, so councilmember, what, what the thought process behind there was is when, um, the EOC was being designed at the Centennial Plaza, that was also an availability to free up space at our police department. So the police department is in need of space specifically, um, for detectives and, and a few other things. So there would be an opportunity with the, uh, design of tenant improvements, uh, for the, the police department to get some additional space to be able to house staff.
All right, thank you. That's perfect. Thank you.
I, just for, just stating, uh, Mr. Coin was here representing Senator Hurtado's office, and, uh, these are some of the funds he was talking about that we need to expand. Uh, Councilman Beltran, any comments? Uh, Councilman Green?
Oh, nothing to add.
Okay, I'm looking for a second on my motion.
I second.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay, question to the council. We still have now on schedule matters, uh, agenda item one, seven twenty-two. We have twelve thirty-four reports, oral communication, and other matters. Do you guys want a recess? Or do you want to push through? You'd like a recess? Yeah, okay, let's take a ten-minute recess.
No.
Number one.
Okay, we'll reconvene from recess. City manager, agenda item number one.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Consent calendar, agenda item number one was pulled from the consent calendar to be a scheduled matter. Staff is available to... Do you have a staff report or answer any questions?
Okay, Vice Mayor McCurvy, you pulled this agenda item. I'll go ahead and let you lead the way.
I'll keep it brief. You know, I was shocked when I saw that we had this problem with our bridge. And after we had the problem last month with the Porter Street Bridge, and that's also under repair. But looking at the pictures at what the homeless had done in our city to undermine some of our infrastructure, it's really eye-opening. So if you do the math on this, we're going to spend $2 million to fix a bridge that we just actually put in not too many years ago. And it's because we have people that are living under that bridge. And it's terrible to see all of the different smoke and the things that they've done under there. And I just want to get on the record and talk about how the... what the impact is of homelessness on our city. I would just talk about a couple of things. We spend a couple million dollars a year on the navigation center. We spend $300,000 a year on the armory to try to keep people out, give people a place to sleep at night.
This is the time for the council, ma'am. You'll have your opportunity.
And so we're spending a significant amount of time and resources with our staff. Our businesses are impacted, the homelessness and the crime that goes with it. It takes a toll on the city. And in my estimation with now with these repairs, this is going to be over $10 million. It's really equivalent of about $150 per family and about $50 per person, just this bridge. And I want to get that on the record. This is money that the city is spending to manage the homelessness problem. And it's not a small amount. It's a big amount. And so I just wanted to pull this and talk about this for a minute because it's not just some incidental thing. This is 20 miles of road that we could have put in. And so you've got to think about the trade-offs here. As a community, we want to try to serve everyone, but the taxpayers aren't being impacted quite significantly by this problem. And I just wanted to get on the record and talk about that for a moment because that's $2 million that's going to be used to fix something that wasn't broken.
Okay, is there any other comments from the council?
Well, I would just state, yes, we are pulling $2 million from the Measure R funds. It's not anticipated to cost $2 million to repair the bridges, but it is an impact, significant impact. Either way, Vice Mayor, you have a great point. I would... The $10 million mark is almost funny money. I'm thinking more around six, just off the top of my head. You're right, we spend about $2.3 million on services for the homeless, not to mention the fire department and police department providing services in parks and leisures with the abatement, damage caused for public works. And now we're pulling $2 million from Measure R funds that could have gone to another project instead of repairing a bridge that was perfectly fine. And there were some comments earlier about where is the money? And there's a layout on some of the resources this city expends annually to provide services for the homeless. So with that, I would make a motion to go forward with the staff recommendation if there's no other comments.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, let's call for the vote. Five-zero, passes. Okay, moving on to agenda item seven, city manager.
I'm really excited to see this on the agenda. I pulled it for a comment. Had a great discussion with the city manager about this. And I'm hopeful that with this new design that we can create two playoff fields instead of the one that we have in the original design. And then I'm hoping that we can get to something that is a playoff type of a field rather than a regular field in this design and with bleachers and concessions. So I just wanted to make my desires plain in this as we send this out to execute a new agreement and look at the design. I want to make sure the design elements include bleachers and concessions and it has a competitive-type playoff field. So if we build out a larger park that these two fields would be where we do like the playoff games and be a destination for people that came from out of town if we were to have a big game out there. Not unlike it was when it was over here by where the Justice Center was. I mean, I remember going to that ball field with the bleachers. We saw circus out there, three-ring circus, Barnum and Bailey. It used to be part of the fairgrounds. That was the type of thing that I'm hoping to see out here. I don't know what this design will be like, but I'm hoping that it'll be a place that people can gather and enjoy like I did when I was a kid.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And just for clarification in my understanding and reading the document, we already have the two fields. We were designing one field, so we're adding another one, so it'd be a total of four fields?
No, your honor. So currently, what this is looking at is there is one adult field that would be able to be used for youth all the way up to adult that's being designed on the south end of the sports complex. That was designed with a lighted field. This would be to essentially be able to mirror that and have another field designed adjacent to that on that south end. Then to have a site plan, master plan, if you would, to be able to lay out improvements across the sports complex as a planning tool to be able to use for future planning of the sports complex. So that way we could have some forethought into this and have a design completed for two fields. With that site plan, it could look at where the softball fields are at to consider, does the, you know, does the community and the council want to have, you know, prior it was thought to have two additional softball fields there. You could put some netting up and how this all can work together and looking at, you know, maybe some of these fields have temporary fences. Some of them have permanent so that there could be a multi-use across the board of the sports complex to remain the open space, but yet to still have improvements that the community wants to see and utilize.
Thank you for that clarification. I was thinking they were going to be softball fields, but now that makes sense as far as the proposed area for baseball fields in the layout here. Are there any other comments?
I have one question. Are we even thinking about... Oh, you probably are, but parking, is that going to have an impact on that, on the growth of those baseball fields?
So there is currently a large parking lot on the north side of the sports complex. The sports complex has the ability to handle quite a bit of cars. They've been out there for several large events, and we also host Freedom Fest out there as well. There is an unimproved parking area as well that looks on the eastern side of the sports complex. So that is not included in this, but in the master plan, site plan, that can be evaluated of looking at future parking improvements along there.
Thank you for that clarification.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, briefly. Yeah, when I looked at this, I was... A couple of thoughts came to mind, but meeting with staff, they kind of what a city manager had just alluded to is that this is just mirroring, since we're already spending funding to plan one baseball field, it made sense to spend some additional funding to mirror that field so that way we do have a project ready. So if there are funds in the future that we can maximize it. But I did have a concern, and we'll see if that gets brought up in the future agendas, is that I do have a concern about it being seen already as a baseball complex in that baseball is a seasonal sport and that's a field that can only be used for certain... You can't play soccer on it. You can't play football on it. You really are limited use. And so given that we just had our general parks plan last year, out of the 13 items that the community wanted, none of them were baseball fields. And so I don't mind the idea of expanding the field usage because I think we did lose a field. But I would, if there was a comeback, I would love the community input to see if that's something... I don't want to build... I want to build something for our community, not necessarily something that hope others might come and utilize. I've been involved in youth sports since I was a kid. My kids were in sports. Football's a big thing for five or 10 years, and then all of a sudden swimming's a big thing for five years, and then baseball's big. Right now, soccer is the biggest sport in our community. I believe the two, I think at least two organizations in our community have about 1,300 kids that use theirs versus like Little League that has, I think, 200. So baseball actually isn't the biggest sport in our community. So although I support this plan and the future of an additional plan, I'd be concerned with the outright dedication that their ball feels like to Vice or to the city manager's point of maybe a temporary outdoor homerun fence line or anything like that. So that way it can be utilized possibly for other uses. But as far as this goes, I'm supportive. I would make the motion to approve staff recommendations one through four.
I'll second that motion. Are there any other comments? We'll call for the vote. Passes five-zero. Agenda item number 22, city manager.
Yes, your honor. Agenda item 22 is a consideration of authorization for additional funds for Main Street projects. Staff is available to provide a staff report or answer any questions.
Yeah, just I wanted to add a couple of comments on this one. I think we've gone through this a few times, so just clarification. Adding additional funds for Main Street is also adding to the scope of the project, right? Because the additional funds are to do the trees on the north side of Main Street. So that, I just want to make sure that's a clarification there because when we took out the other trees, then it added some expense to that expansion. And there were some comments that have been made around town, and I'll say this again. We believe that the value of a mature tree, like the trees that we took out, was probably about $8,000 over time. You could never replace a tree like that, but some of those trees were diseased. Some of it was because of water issues. And so for consistencies, we elected to take out all the trees and put in all new trees. These trees don't cost $8,000, not nearly that. They're, if I remember correctly, I think they were around $1,500. So I just want to make sure there's some clarification there for the public so they understand what we're doing in this addition is changing the trees from the original plan and adding to the north side of Main Street, just to make sure that that's clear. Because it doubles the amount of trees required, and that's a lot of what this expense is when we pick the larger boxes.
So what we're seeing in this amendment is the change to the trees. And so essentially going from a different species of tree and then going from a 24-inch box to a 48-inch box where it fits. There are, I believe, 12 locations where a 48-inch box won't fit. So when you buy a larger tree, not only does a larger tree cost more, but there's additional labor that's incurred to install a larger tree. And so what this is doing is to amend the budget for the project to allow for the acquisition and installation of the larger trees. Not necessarily more trees on the opposite side of the street. All the trees were included in that. This is just looking at the change order of different species with larger tree. And Mr. Sanchez is here as well to correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you for that clarification. Vice Mayor, do you have any other comments?
So let me make sure I understand. Jason, you said that the original plan wasn't to change out the trees?
So the plan has changed a few times. So in the original plan, it was to replace all the trees. Then we went to, in an attempt to save the majority of the trees, is we went through with an arborist to indicate which trees were diseased and dying that needed to be removed. In the meantime, while that was done, those were flagged. Then we had a storm. I would say not even a great storm, but a mild storm with a windstorm that came through town. And a tree that we had deemed, or the arborist had deemed it to be healthy, fell over. And so with that, it brought concern. And looking at it in reevaluation of the trees, then at that time, the council made a determination to replace all the trees. So the original trees in the plan, I believe the majority of them were fruitless olives with the Chinese pistachio to be at the corners. Then subsequently after that, the council provided direction to change the plan to be 48-inch box tree of Chinese pistachio for all the trees for consistency.
Okay, that's fair. It did change over time. It's been going on for two years, right?
Correct. And so as, you know, learning more through studying of the trees as we were going through the project, it seemed to evolve of learning, you know, just like you, Vice Mayor, wanted to save as many of the trees as we could. I also like a mature tree and think it brings character to a downtown. Downtown, they're really about creating a sense of place, and mature trees provide that. And so there was that effort to save those trees. But unfortunately, there was even the trees that were deemed to not be diseased. We had one fall over and provided some cause there.
Fair enough. I just wanted to get on the record, just so everyone understands what we're doing. There was an estimate issue there too that added to this, but it's still considering all the trees that we're changing and doing the whole street. It still seems it's almost within the original budget, so...
Yeah, and you are correct. Original estimate that we got, there was a typographical error by one of the contractors that mistakenly left out a zero on the labor. Zeros are important.
Well, it depends on what end you're on on that, right?
Just at the end.
Yes. Okay, is there any other comments from any of the council on this issue?
When we talked about this the last time, you know, a big concern was the cost. I think I was the ascending vote of not having them that size, but that's not the direction we ended up going. I didn't know if this additional cost changed anybody's perspective of the size of the tree, but I still would go back to the recommendation of, at least my opinion, of not having that large of an expense of the 48-inch box trees. That's all.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay. All right, is there any talk of what direction you guys want to go here? I'll make a motion for staff recommendation on agenda item number 22.
I second that, but I have one question. How many times have we revitalized the downtown area in 10 years, 15 years?
I believe the last time that it was, well, I believe those trees were planted over 20 years ago. I believe in, I want to say 97, 98, if my memory serves me correct. And so, but it has been a significant amount of time. This is, as we say, Main Street is more of a, it's like a generational project, similar to community centers and those things. We really try to... It is once every many, many years.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote. So, there we go. For Warren passes. All right, we're done with scheduled matters. We'll move on to 1230 reports. This is the time for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to government code. Start with Tulare County Task Force on Homeless met March 19th.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the meeting was held on March 16th at 1:30 at the Board of Supervisors Building. During the discussions, they passed the minutes for February the 19th to 25. And where Mrs. Chacon, representative for the Jackson House, opened up their new doors in Tulare, and I'll give you some bullet points in regards to their activities. Ms. Chacon is Director of Jackson House of Tulare. Visely provided an overview of Jackson House Crisis Residential Treatment Facility in Tulare. The key points here are program focus. Jackson House offers 24/7 short-term voluntary residential care for adults experiencing mental health crisis. It serves as a non-locked therapeutic alternative to hospitalization. The target population are adults 18 and over with mental health conditions, including those with co-occurring substance use disorders. Clients must be able to complete daily living tasks independently in order to participate in the treatment. Non-eligible that they vet are individuals with severe medical conditions, mobility limitations, sex offenders, aggressive behavior, or ax-eating disorders. Are excluded due to licensing and staffing limitations. Comprehensive services include group therapy, CBT, DBT, psychiatric care, dual diagnostic treatment, crisis intervention, life skill support, trauma-informed care and discharge planning. Facility info, it's a 16-bed residential setting that is inclusive and affirming, especially for transgender and gender diverse individuals. Smoking areas are available to accommodate clients where they are in their recovery process. Referrals are accepted from individuals and organizations throughout Tulare County. Phone screenings are conducted quickly with a responsible typical provider within an hour. And from the fiscal impact of it, from 2023 to present, 2,991 clients have been seen. How, as I should say. 6,245 clients have been served since, up to date. First-time homelessness, 2,583. Household served, 25.9% of the families were served. Single persons, 74.1%. Household referrals were 77. The outcomes were very astronomical in rehabilitation. And with that, we had an update with Eric Scott, the deputy county counselor in regards to the Brown Act. Just two new amendments, which one was with in regards to the internet and a few other things, what not to do in the Browns Act. And then we had a brief synopsis of homeless housing assistance and prevention from HHAP-6. with Mr. Bradley Cottingham. And with that, um, very, not very much was said in regards to that, other than budgetary and, uh, the, the way the, the Cal- California budget is, is, uh, probably, uh, looking at some, um, uh, funds that it won't be available, but that is in the near future that, uh, they can't, um, determine yet. So, after that, I mean, that's all I have for the homelessness, okay?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Rivas. Uh, Tulare Economic, excuse me, Tulare County Economic Development Corp. Um, I did not make the meeting, but I did go to the, um, the summit. Is it, should I cover the summit and other matters or?
Up to you, Your Honor. You, you can cover the summit and then I can cover the E D C meeting if you would like.
Perfect. Let's do that. Let's just kill it. So, uh, I, I, I went to the economic summit, March twenty-first. Um, the, the twenty-sixth was, uh, the meeting that, uh, uh, City Manager Ridenhour will give us an update on. I wasn't able to attend. Uh, the economic summit was eye-opening. There was some statistics for Tulare County. We are mirroring, Tulare County is mirroring what the state is doing as far as growth. And it, it really made me go, oh, wow, because we're one of the poorest counties in the state of California and one of the poorest counties in the nation, and we're mirroring what the state's doing. So, uh, I think that shows what is going on and, and the job loss and, and the tax revenue loss and then the impact, uh, through regulations in this state are, are just killing us all. Talked about housing and the trickle-down effect through housing and, um, I really, uh, what was his name? Christopher Thornburg? Thornburg, yes. Uh, he, he made a great point on housing regulation, how it's, that's really what's driving up the cost of housing. It's, uh, they, they say, we gotta build affordable housing. Well, if we had less regulations and the ability to build more houses, the affordable housing crisis would not be so. Some things he didn't cover that I, I think are gonna be crucial coming up here is the reduction in regulation from the federal level. We still live in the state of California, but also the cost of energy going down and then tariffs in the future. And tomorrow is a big day for our nation. Um, with that, I'll, I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Ridenhour, if you could cover the rest.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I did attend the, the meeting on, uh, March twenty-sixth, uh, as the mayor, Representative for the City of Porterville, the mayor's absence. Unfortunately, there was not a quorum at the meeting, but we did receive a presentation, uh, from the Air Pollution Control, uh, Seminole Valley District. Um, uh, the, uh, Deputy, the Deputy Officer there, Ryan Haisha, probably butchered his name and apologized for that. Um, so we received that about, about some of their regulations. Um, so the, the air, the air district, they do not enforce mobile regulations. They do, they enforce regulations on development. So, he gave some statistics on, on that. One of the things that I thought was interesting, they did show some images of, uh, programs that they have and grant programs that they utilize. Um, and the, one of the City of Porterville buses was on his image. Um, so we were able to utilize, uh, y- a few years ago, ten million dollars of funding. Uh, I remember Mr. Tree, Mr. Knight, myself and a few others, uh, worked through the night to write that grant. I actually remember, it's like three o'clock in the morning, uh, out in my shop, writing the grant. So, it was, uh, to which then the, the next day, um, Mike Knight and, uh, uh, for- former Director of Public Works drove it up to Sacramento. So, that was interesting times. Um, but it was good to, to see that and hear some of their regulations. Um, that was i- interesting to get their perspective, to say the least. Um, and then also there was an overview provided of the economic summit, uh, how that did financially for the organization that is one of their fundraisers for the year. So, that was a, a, a good outcome for them.
Uh, it was a great event. And just for my colleagues, um, we got the email today from, uh, City Manager Ridenhour on the event, some of the statistics and the slides from Dr. Thornburg. Um, I suggest looking into it. It's interesting data. Um, with that, we'll move on to, and thank you, City Manager, for covering me there. We'll move on to Porterville Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Um, myself and Vice Mayor, uh, met on March twenty-seventh. Um, we went through the public comments. There were many farmers in the room, mostly P I D folks and, uh, myself, Vice Mayor and Assistant City, City Manager Knight. Um, we talked about some of the governing board appointments, um, went over the G S A formation, and, uh, we'll see what comes. Uh, uh, P I D still has, um, some concerns, uh, so does the city, and, um, we'll see what comes in the future. Do you have anything to add, Vice Mayor?
Well, I thought there was a lot of great participation from the farmers that, uh, felt like they were not represented. And there was some good discussion there. And I think the compromise didn't really, um, present itself as a, a big change, but I think it was worthwhile to try to get that committee in the fifth vote. We'll see if that, that happens, but it was great to get the input from some people that weren't, felt like they weren't represented and, and fold them into the, to the plan. We'll see if that comes to fruition, but, uh, got to meet some, uh, interesting people and, uh, talk, had some great conversations on the farmer's side, so.
Yeah, just for the clarification, it was for the stakeholder vote. And I, uh, it was something that I pushed. I was very vocal about having a tie-breaking vote, uh, or five voting members on the P I D. I don't know if it was very well, um, taken, but it, it is what it is and we'll see what comes in the future. Assistant City Manager Knight, do you have anything to add? Okay, and we'll move on to Tulare County Association of Governments Board Training, uh, met March twenty-seventh. I did not attend. Councilman Rivas, did you?
Yeah, I attended that and, uh, it was, uh, very enlightening. Um, it was a lot of, um, a lot of information on how budgets, uh, uh, are allocated. Um, unfortunately, I didn't take very many notes because it was very, um, um, new to me. So, with that, I just, uh, I enjoyed it. It was great. Mr. Ridenhour, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, so I was able to attend for the first couple of hours. Unfortunately, it was Agenda Thursday, so I had to, to come back and wrap up the agenda. Great event. Thank you, Councilmember, for, for attending. Uh, I think it was great to hear perspectives of some members that have been longtime members, uh, from a supervisor, uh, standpoint, county supervisor standpoint, also from, um, mayor's standpoint and, and from some city managers to, to really give an overall umbrella look at how T C A G works and how the funding works. And, and really, T C A G looks at having shovel-ready projects. You get a project ready, leverage funding, and T C A G really helps cities, uh, figure out how to fund those projects. It's often, not oftentimes, it's, it's always cheaper to build a project today than it is in ten years. And so, we really tried to think ahead, um, utilize the best funding available to get projects designed to make them available for funding.
Yeah, I remember attending that course a year and a half ago, two years ago, and that, that's a lot of information. I understand that. I gotta ask a question. Uh, two years ago, John Lawless was the Senior City Manager and he, he kinda got to get up and speak. Did they lean on him again?
No, Mr. Lawless was not in attendance. Um, so, in attendance, uh, as the, um, Senior City Manager was Leslie Cavilla. Um, also, um, Ramon from, from the City of Woodlake was there and then I was in attendance.
Yes.
Got you. Thank you. Okay, uh, with that, we'll move on to oral communication. This is an opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes.
Sherri Shields again. First of all, Mr. Councilman, that told me I was defiant because my arms were crossed. I was cold. I left here, I went down to the center where you're housing the people, where the million dollars is missing from. You walk in that nasty place, there's about twenty people in there right now. They will spend the night on the cot. You go down there before you go home and take a walk through that place. There was two men there with security orange jackets that couldn't even tell me who they were, what they were doing, just that they were city, city, sign, ha, sign, city, sign. My hands stink from touching the pencil, from touching the doors. The place is filthy. You need to take a look down there. You need to walk out, there's a man sitting out here on the side of your building who's gonna sit out there in the cold all night long. You're not better than I am. I worked for the U S Post Office thirty-five years. I'm a human being. You act like you're better than I am. All of you need to know that we are human beings out here. Those homeless people didn't tear up your bridge. Apparently, it wasn't structured very well. You spend your money because you have it and you can throw it away. Maybe Elon Musk needs to come here and look at your finances. I reserve the right to continue and you are past your limits of where I put in writing and requested to know where that million dollars went for the homeless. You're not taking that homeless money and spending it to fix and repair your bridges or to clean up your trash or to buy new trash cans out here or to do your lighting that you've done down by the river so people can go by the walkways. Who's gonna secureity those people that are going by the walkways? Next you know, there's gonna be a rape down there or somebody, little kid falls in the river. There's gonna be some injury. You all sent the sheriffs out there to run the homeless off to tell them that you bought the property. I've never seen any Indian property be given away. That's Tulley River area. I have never seen them sell off land. I'm disgusted with you. You don't tell me this is defiant. I'm cold. I happen to be a little older and I, this is me. It's not defiant. I'm a human being. Shame on you. You sit up there with your little smirky attitudes. Shame on you. Go down and look what you're, how much I put in writing, how much you guys are, where are you paying? The trees, you give a figure and you try to say, we're not spending that much on the trees. Where are you getting those trees from?
You have thirty seconds.
Where are you getting the trees from? Sequoia National Park? Because they're awful expensive to me. You wanna laugh at my figure of seven thousand, eight thousand dollars apiece? You all were the ones who wrote it in your writing, a hundred and seventy-two, a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, it was a newspaper, saying, and at that time, twenty-two, twenty-four trees. That's awful expensive to me. You shouldn't have tore up the trees that we had. One fell down, so we take the whole group out.
Thank you, Ms. Shields.
The attitude, look at it.
Thank you, Ms. Shields.
Good evening, Council. City Managers. Uh, Dawn Bennett, five fifty Dexter Avenue in Porterville. Uh, I did have an opportunity to speak with my Council Representative, Mr. McGurvy, on break, but I did want to go over, uh, a couple of concerns that I have. Unfortunately, I was not present when Resolution fifteen twenty-two-five was put into place. So, I emailed Mr. McGurvy about a suggestion, but I was on the backside of the ball. So, my concerns are the above, and I know that you've already selected the members for your committee, but I've heard time and time again at these council meetings that we want to keep it local. We want to keep it local. I understand that the businesses are local, but wouldn't it be nice if the people that have the businesses that are on the committee also live in the city of Porterville and support the other businesses here? There are two members that are not Porterville residents that are going to be on the committee. So, I just want you to think about that in the big picture of things. I understand that I don't own a business on Main Street. It's on my bucket list. I would really love to own a business on Main Street, but there are barriers. I need help with those barriers. You know, I'm a disabled female, small business owner that is losing business because there are so many restrictions in place from the state to the county. I can't sell a cake with fresh fruit to my clients because the restrictions are so absurd. But there's a fruit vendor on every corner for every event. We need code enforcement. There are people selling baked goods and other things on Facebook that are not licensed or permitted. How am I going to compete with that? Their price point is always gonna be lower because they're not paying all the fees that I'm paying to comply with the law. I'm going under. I've been here three years. I had a business in Maine and I made a profit and I can't make a profit here. There are too many barriers. Small businesses in this community coming from away need serious help. I am that voice, but I'm not gonna be on the committee because I don't already have a business downtown. So, think about those things. I have applied to be on another committee. You know I have a strong voice. You've heard me before. Let me help grow this community. I'm here, ready to work. Just give me the job. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Brock Neely, address on record. You know, earlier when, uh, you were discussing a project and, uh, Vice Mayor disparaged Councilmember Beltran because in a previous meeting, he voted against a partic- particular item. He's one-fifth of that council. He carries the same weight as you do as a vote. He has the right to change his mind, to have input after the fact. You have to remember, yeah, you're all registered Republicans, but you're not in a Republican seat. That is a nonpartisan seat. Act like it, it represents all you could catch once.
Dawn, it's a way I just on record, just want to lighten the mood up a little bit. Thank you guys for being here. Get some energy in the room. Thank you all for, uh, for all your jobs and for being here. Some of your money even being paid, I just realized. So, thank you. Thank you for the volunteerism. Uh, item seven, thank you for pulling it. I think Vice Mayor, I think you might pull it. That's awesome. I'm glad to see that we're actually, um, getting somewhere on the sports complex. It's a great asset. We have fields all over the city. So, I think, uh, getting a plan and getting that going and getting everybody together is, is, is a great, a great idea. And, and I'm glad and I'm so energized and I spent an hour just looking at the map and measuring the ball fields everywhere and trying to figure how many could, we could fit there. You're right. Maybe four ball fields, maybe a, uh, a concession stand in the middle. Summer and baseball is year-round now. Soccer is year-round. Everybody, these sports are year-round. So, I, I, I'm great to hear that you guys are making progress on that. And, uh, what else was it? Uh, thank you for creating the commission and, and the downtown commission and getting that going. I'm really excited as an individual and as part of the chamber to see that coming through. And even though the chamber is not officially on there, we're, we're ready to support and to hear the young lady come up and talk about your business. Um, I'm on the chamber, a part of the chamber. We'd love for you to come down there and speak to us. There are, there are tools the city has. I'm sure there's loans and small things that these members will talk to you about and that we're ready to help you. Yeah, so come down to the chamber on Main Street, find us and, uh, oh, we have one tomorrow. You're gonna be at the ambassador lunch tomorrow? And we do have a ambassador lunch tomorrow too, so please show up. There's twelve, twelve p.m. at Jenny Lynn's. So, I guess I'll plug the, the chamber a little bit. And David Horowitz is, is this Thursday, and we have our, our spring festival this Saturday. It's gonna be amazing. So, um, thank you so much. I appreciate you guys. I gave you a hard time because I care, but I want to see you guys succeed. Have a good night.
I have a question. I'll be, tomorrow I'll be, um, late a little bit because I have to work, but I'll be at that, uh, meeting tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Are, is there anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone. Uh, is there anyone online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, other, or, well, lost here. Other matters, all right. I think I'd have that figured out by now. Moving on to other matters, I'll start with Councilman Beltran.
Uh, let's see. Productive meeting, great job, everybody. Um, I want to start by, uh, I was curious that the, um, earlier public comment, there was a Betty Luna, I believe, who was asking about the ribbons on Main Street. Do we have an ordinance that would allow that or something we need to make a motion on?
So, um, if the council, um, we have, in prior years, the council has provided, um, approval for that organization to put them on the trees. Um, I think it would be mindful for the council, if it's okay with the council. Staff can reach out to them and let them know that's okay, but, um, we would just need that to come from the council. But we just need that to come from the council.
It's like an encroachment permit, but because it's very prominent, because it's gonna be, it's something we'd want the council to have.
Okay, do we need to make a motion for that?
Just direction, right?
Just need direction.
And make a motion, then it's gotta go on the agenda.
If the council is, is, provides me with direction that, that that's okay, I will make sure that we reach out to them and let them know.
Is there any issue? Well, we can do this by negation, so there's no desire to put it on to have any discussion about it. You guys are comfortable with staff if they were to proceed in doing that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm comfortable, but I'd like to know where they're gonna put these ribbons on. All downtown Main Street, Olive, or?
Typically, what they put the ribbons on is from Morton to Olive on the trees. And so I, my understanding is they wanna put them on the light poles from Morton to Olive.
I'm good with that.
Okay. The next was, let's see. I spoke with Ms. Shields earlier today. She had brought some comments the last few meetings about the homelessness and the city's efforts. And I attempted to have a conversation with her roughly ten minutes, but she just was very adamant that the city is just not making enough efforts. And being on the link committee over the last two years, I was sharing her some personal things that I've done as well as the committee. And I invited her for, to the link committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. But just, it's hard to explain, and I don't wanna sound educated as if she doesn't know what she's talking about, but just she keeps asking questions and I kept trying to answer, but she was very adamant that I didn't know what I was talking about, which was very frustrating. Unfortunately, I did hang up on her, but that was just after several attempts to explain what we are doing and that I felt that our discussion wasn't making any progress, and so I ended the call. My time is valuable, but I always have an open policy for anybody who calls, emails, texts me. I afford them that opportunity, but I also ask them to respect my time. And it just didn't seem like that conversation was going well. Unfortunately, we saw a little bit of that example today, but I'll continue to work with her if she's willing to, to accept that. So I didn't wanna make the community think that we do not, that we ignore citizens. The, last Wednesday, the Exchange Club had the first responders recognition for, first responders. What a great event for Porterville PD was recognized Detective Serna, who I'm proud to say is a cousin of mine, and then Fire Captain Zavala. So it was great to, to have their colleagues out there. Obviously, the, the chief Cogburn was there, but unfortunately, Police Chief was in Texas. There's private jets in different ways. But I will say this. I was sporting a Porterville Fire Department hat because one was given to me. And I would love to wear a Porterville PD hat once one becomes available. So just, just saying. It could be a sweat helmet. It could be what, you know, just
Mooch.
Well, if we're gonna ask for
I'll, I'll second that emotion. So anyhow, it was just a great event, great recognition. And it wasn't just Porterville. It was Tullary County Sheriff, Porterville CHP office, the Tulley River Tribe with their fire and police, Lindsay. So great event just to recognize those individuals. A lot of young individuals. There's an older gentleman from the Tullary County. But just, just to see that there are just these outstanding members in our local community that step up for that call. Last Friday also, we had the World of Fame ceremony. What, another great five individuals. And it just reminds you of all the troubles that we, we talk about, you know, trying to get economic development. It's on Main Street, the homelessness. That our community is in great shape, and we have civic-minded individuals who just give of themselves, whether it's financially, their time, their wisdom, their mentorship, their encouragement, just their churches, organizations, or in through their businesses. Just a great opportunity to highlight those types of individuals. I think that was all I have written down. Oh, I did see a very large plane flying over. What plane was that? I, I'd love seeing that. And I, I was out of town, heading to town, but I was like, that's not a normal plane that arrives in Porterville. So could you please, Dr. Tree, what, what was that plane?
It was a C-130J operated by the military. There's been quite a bit of operations out at the airport. I think Mr. Knight and I looked over a thousand operations from the airport in the last couple of weeks. We'll see the C-130 again. There's some folks from the Marine Corps coming later this month. Currently at the airport are folks from the, from West Point practicing, so.
All right. Look forward to seeing that up in the sky. And being a small town, and we see something like that up in the sky, you're going, what's going on? So great to have them visiting us.
The Russians were coming there, Ray.
No, that's all. The, the student presentation earlier today was really neat to see that young activists in our community. Look forward to reaching out to them to see how we can help them out. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Rivas.
Yes, I just wanna say thank you for the staff, for preparing this agenda. You guys work hard. And I really, we all appreciate that from, for getting this ready for us. Mr. Fernando, Lori, and Chief, Fire Chief and the police. Also, I wanna say that, you know, we're moving in the right direction. I know a lot of people don't understand where the money goes and the budgeting, but from the beginning of where I started, I'm starting to get a, 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 paint this picture of, of how things are operating and, and going through the fruition of budgeting and, and getting programs in order. So, you know, we just have to communicate with the public and our stakeholders on, on these issues so we can, can, they can be aware of what, what we're doing. That way we don't keep them in the dark and we, we can have transparency. But other than that, I like where we're going. I hope we can cut this short because we've had some long, long times. But other than that, I just wanted to say again, thank you very much for your, for the staff, Mr. Rottner. That you guys do an exceptional job. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Green.
Other matters. We were going to, at our last meeting, Kevin Gibson, and I can't remember his friend's name that was with him.
The Jackass Mail Run?
For the Jackass Mail Run. They weren't asking for any money because they realized that, you know, once you start handing, handing out money, you gotta hand it out to everybody kinda. And they weren't, I don't, I didn't really sense that they were looking for a solution, but they, they, and I got an email from Kevin or text that showed some of their, a lot of their expenses. Permits, Highway Patrol permit for patrol services while they're on one ninety and so on and so forth. And, and I think Ed and I've kinda just kicked it around a little bit. We can't really decide exactly how to handle it. If, to give them some help, but I don't know how we would do that. That's a tough one because it, it either just be permitting, like, I can't remember when there was one permit. I think the city required a permit for Am I, am I thinking right there?
I don't believe the city required a, a permit. I do know they do have road closures on State Route one ninety and then through Springville with that. And so I don't believe that the, the city is charging them for anything.
It just seemed like I saw something like it was, it was insignificant, whatever it was, but, and I don't remember exactly. But Take over from there, yeah. Okay. I, I just, I don't remember what it was. I just know there was some little something. But I think they had, then they have expense for the band, for the, the dance and all that. So I don't know. I don't know. It's something. And we don't have a lot of time. If, if we could even help them, the Jackass Mail runs, what, two weekends from this weekend coming? Well, anybody have any thoughts on that?
If it's a nominal amount, I'm comfortable with, I don't know if a thousand dollars would be, it's a nominal amount.
Well, it'd help.
And, and I know a lot of these organizations are, you know, the, the membership fluctuates, but you start getting to larger amounts, it's a little different, but little seed money, I'm completely comfortable with helping out with something minimal like that. It just helps.
That sounds reasonable to me.
They definitely can help us in the future too with Pioneer Days, and maybe there, we can build a relationship with them. And maybe that's a good olive branch to get that going because they seemed like they were trying to restart a little bit. So I think it would give them a little shot in the arm. I, I like the recommendation, Ray.
So
I agree with that. That's good, Ray. Thank you.
Yeah, if, if you guys would like to make the motion, is that, it's something we have to put on the
The problem we have is that we can't, I mean, we don't have an item on to approve it.
Right.
You'd have to make a motion.
So we could, yeah, it's not gonna
We could still do that because what happens is they just allocate money and then they're just
Reimbursed for next year.
reimbursed for, for funding. So that's something we wanna put on our next agenda.
Look at supporting.
You'd have to get a motion in a second from the
Check back and see if there's a sponsorship, and then now we could do it. Maybe that way we can do a sponsorship of up to like a thousand dollars.
It's difficult because I haven't got any feedback from Kevin and their committee on what, it was kinda like
I'll reach out to Tanya Baker. She's another one that was up here representing. I'll reach out to her.
She is. You talked, okay.
I, I was gonna save it for when it's my turn to talk, but I talked to Kevin Gibson as well, and, and his ask wasn't for financial help. His ask was to help get it out in the public, and, and he said that it would be a feather in the cap to have like the mayor ride in the Jackass Mail Run. And so I, I am going to be riding with him.
Are you?
Well, I may be the, no, but
So that doesn't take any action.
Yes, no, I could do that on my own. So, so these are, what I got from Kevin was that he, he wanted the participation, the participation of the council. It's not a Brown Act violation to talk to Mr. Gibson.
It's an exception to the Brown Act. You can all be there and ride if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the legal advice.
Are you, okay. What if we take a picture? Is that gonna be a Brown's Act issue? I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I talked with Kevin and, and he, he said that it's not a financial ask. It was to help continue the spirit or the historical tradition of the, the Jackass Mail Run. And so I, I volunteered to ride in the city limits to the post office and then to the city edge. So I will be doing that. Or is that all?
Yeah, that was it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Green. Vice Mayor McIrby.
I, I'm gonna go to the dance to try to support him at the dance too. Yeah, I don't know how to dance, but
What's the date on?
It's the Wagon Master Dance. What is it? It's the week before.
You got a date? Anybody know a date?
The nineteenth? No, it's the week before the nineteenth, so it'll be like the twelfth.
What is it?
It's at the Oaks Lodge.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, it is. It's this Saturday. It's this Saturday because after the Spring Festival we're going. That's right.
Okay, it's not time for comments between all right, constituents and us. So go ahead.
All right. Yeah, so I guess I'm going to the dance this weekend. Wagon Master Dance is a way we can support them, and then we'll, I'll see what else I can do, Mr. Mayor, because I really wanna support those guys. I, I had the pleasure of going down to the Tulley River Parkway and did a little drone survey. I got some pictures I'll share with you guys. Just beautiful down there this time of the year. It's all green. The gardens are, are blooming. Kathy's gardens are blooming right now. It's, it's just a great time. So if you haven't been down there, this is the best time of the year to be down there to, to see our river in its green state. It's not gonna stay that way, you know, too much longer. But it looked great down there. There's a lot of great progress that we've been making, and it seemed pretty well-kept. And I'm just excited that that is now starting to become kind of a magnet and a center for town. So hopefully down the road, we can come up with some ways to have some events down there. Maybe we can get back to doing some runs down there, maybe an Easter egg hunt in the future, things like that I think we should consider. So just wanted to talk about that at top of mind. There was an excellent Little League outing again this weekend out at PC. They hosted it. More than a hundred and fifty new ballplayers coming in, four age groups. And it was great to see the, the college kids coaching the high school kids or coaching the younger kids and all taking turns. And they all went out there and ran the bases, and they did a national anthem, and it was just a real spirit that, you know, that baseball spirit was alive and well out there. So that was a great event. There were some comments tonight that make me think that I wanna make a motion. You know, we did a, we talked about getting a finance study session together, and that's coming up. I, I think we need to, and, and I might ask for some input, Jason. I think we could do a, an ordinance study session or development study session, like on Code Two Hundred. I know you guys are going through that stuff. Maybe we could have a study session on that too, because we, our interest is to reduce regulations, and you're going through that. Maybe we could get an update where you are in the process.
Interesting you should mention that. So actually on Lori's desk, Lori is my assistant, I have printed for all the council members an administrative draft of the entire development ordinance. So I am working with the consultant and the Community Development Department. Actually, I'll be, be reaching out to all of you to schedule a, a one-on-one, to be able to, to go through with the professionals and myself, to go through that and look at some of the changes. And then we could, the council would like, we could also have a, a study session prior to bringing the item to council as a whole. So we could have a study session at a regular city council meeting as a scheduled matter and go through that, I, I think is a lot. So it would be valuable to have a one-on-one time with each of the council members to be able to, to go through it and to ask questions. And so, yeah, so we actually got the admin draft together, and we have printed it out for you and bound it to have that discussion. So a very, very timely discussion there.
Yes, okay. So I could make a motion to have a study session. And I was just thinking, you know, in that study session, and we tell me if this is out of bounds, but I, I heard some comments tonight about selective code enforcement and the way we do code enforcement, and how the regulations are impacting some of our new business owners or our small business owners. I'd like that to be part of that, as at least a perspective on the regulations and how they affect the economics of small business and how our code enforcement operates.
So the, the development ordinance, it, it is not around code enforcement per se. So the, the development ordinance really looks to regulate how development occurs within the city of Porterville as well as in that is the zoning ordinance is a component of that.
Okay, zoning's in there, but code enforcement's separate.
Correct. And so code enforcement is really looking at all the municipal code and enforcing the municipal code across the city. Is that, so all the ordinance together is what, so we operate, we, we do have an ability for the community to report issues through a MyPorterville app and also through the, the website. People can also call City Hall and report things if they would like, and so people take many avenues on that. So, but the development ordinance looks at the, the zoning and then the development standards across the board of, of the city as you look at different things. So I think when you sit down one-on-one and have the study session, we get a better understanding of that. So it's really looking at, you know, for example, on residential, you're looking at lot sizes, you're looking at densities. Looking at on the zoning ordinance, looking at what uses are permitted in which zone. And so we, we've seen that before, and so you're looking at, you know, as we talk about like the cannabis item, right, of adding CG to, to one of the allowed zoning districts that cannabis would be in that the council's gonna consider. So that, as you look at that ordinance, that was the, the draft ordinance, that is what gets input into that chapter of the municipal code.
That helps a lot. Thank you, Jason. So maybe just a study session on development code with the zoning and
Are you good with it being a regular scheduled city council meeting?
Yeah, that's okay. I just, I just don't wanna get like to the eleventh hour and then have to look at all that stuff at once. So I wanna get up to speed on that stuff before it gets out.
Yeah, so, so that's the plan. So we've been working with the development community over the, the last year plus, seeking input from the development community. We do have a developer quarterly call. We've been pushing this information out to get feedback and really just asking people, you know, in, in their business and as their developers, what are they seeing? What do they see that? What do they see that needs to be streamlined? What are they seeing that needs to be, be amended? Um, because as we know, development continues to change and, and look at things of, of how it, you know, our development ordinance could be easier for development. And so that was our goal with this. Um, and so that was the direction that council gave us before we started this. And so this has been the charge. So it hasn't come out of nowhere. We've been doing a lot of outreach to the development community as they are typically the ones that are impacted, um, by the development ordinance.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate that. That was my other matters. Mr. Mayor.
Well, and, and that is great news and it is the agenda of this council. Um, and, and city staff has already been taking strides in, in regulation cuts and working with our, our businesses in town. And, and I love to hear that we're continuing to look at areas that we can improve to benefit the businesses. Did you have something to say?
No, I was just, you know, on that comment, so that has, um, I, I would say been the, the charge of, of staff. We've been looking, we continuously look at that of how can we be business friendly? Um, and how can we do it in a way, um, that is beneficial to the community and doesn't have impacts of a negative nature? So it's, it's a, it's a balance, but we continuously look to how we can do that. And, you know, I have that charge to, to, to the staff to, you know, I, I would say when a project comes to us, my charge i- in, um, they can attest to this and sometimes I, I may be very pushy on it, let's look for options of how this could be done to not, how it could not be done. And so we look at that and sometimes, you know, it takes a lot of work with both parties to, to make that happen, uh, to, to fit it within the regulation.
I, I love it. Um, okay, well, I, and I'll, I'll have some motions at the end of the night, or here at the end of my comments in the direction of cutting regulation and, and something to bring forward in the future. Um, congratulations to the officers at the Public Safety Dinner, uh, hosted by the Exchange Club. Are we gonna have the officer and firefighter in future presentation?
Y- yes, Your Honor. And so the, the plan is at the next council meeting to have a presentation, uh, where we get to honor the police officer and firefighter.
Wonderful. I, unfortunately, had a daughter had softball, uh, son had baseball and, uh, I say family first as Chief Costello always says. Um, congratulations to those folks though. Uh, March 20th, uh, myself, Mr. Reidenhauer and ComDeb folks, uh, went to, uh, uh, recognize the Outstanding Business of the Year, which is ITC. So congratulations to them, Leo and Stephanie Cortez. Um, loved hearing their story. Uh, Mr. Reidenhauer is a fellow Breakfast, Breakfast Road Terrion, um, and they, they hit it off very well. Uh, but first job of his was McDermott. He started out of his house in 2007. He was talking about how all the plans were laid out on his kitchen table and he's grown a mom and pop shop into a, a business here in our community that is thriving and doing well. He has 12 to 15 employees and, uh, you know, creating wealth and jobs in our community. So we're very thankful for them and congratulations to Leo and Stephanie Cortez and ITC. Um, I attended American Legion's 106th birthday, uh, great time with, uh, in a room filled with, uh, patriotic heroes. I presented him a certificate of recognition on behalf of the city. Uh, March 28th, the World of Fame, congratulations to Fred Beltran, Mike Rook, Robert Keely, John Billu and Billy Bennett. Uh, I failed to recognize staff that day. You all did an outstanding job setting up, writing the speeches from bottom to top. Excellent job. I apologize for not giving you the credit in front of the crowd. I, I, it slipped my mind, so I just wanted to tell you guys, great job. It was a great, thank you, Donnie, for setting that up and, and supporting staff all the way around. I know you guys all worked really hard on it. It's one of the, uh, as Mr. Reidenhauer says, one of our favorite events here in the city of Porterville and it really turned out well. Um, to the police department, uh, with the homeless encampments, the bridge, the, all the things that are going on, you guys are doing an amazing job. Thank you. The, the, everything is stacked against us. The, the state regulations, I mean, we, the people voted in Proposition 36, it, it hasn't moved the ball. It, it hasn't moved it for us. Our sheriff is, uh, everything's stacked against the sheriff as well. I had a conversation with him today. Um, it's, uh, it's, it, it gets hard to continue doing something and, and you don't feel like you're getting the results you want. Um, and, and it, it's, it's no fun. So I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. Thank you for taking care of some of the encampments. Keep up the hard work. Keep pushing forward. Um, with that, I'll end, uh, with my agenda and, and continuing to cut regulations, some regulations that I wanna be looking at in the future. Um, uh, one is we've talked about Chapter 20, the public improvement fees, um, from a residential to a mom and pop shop or to a trillion dollar company like Walmart, if they pull permits, it triggers, uh, improvement fees for the city. So it's something I wanna look at in the future. Um, there's also the fireworks. We live in the most regulated state in the nation. We don't need to be the most regulated city. So there's some stuff with fireworks that I wouldn't mind looking at in the future. And then signage. Um, I think that we can, and we, we heard Mr. Holwitz tonight, uh, complaining about it, but there's also other people where I've heard complaints about them beautifying the front of their business with certain signage. And we have regulations and we have code enforcement that enforce the rules of this city. And so it's something I wanna look at and maybe adapt in the future. And then also the talks of, um, cargo containers used as sheds. You know, we have people, uh, landowners in our community that have big backyards, half-acre lots, uh, and, and, and some smaller, but they can fit a container of that size in their backyard. And then, uh, Mr. Reidenhauer, we, we were both together, I'm not gonna say the business owner that it was, but we, we had a business owner that came and wanted to talk about putting two cargo containers on top of each other and, and putting siding on them and, and a stairwell to use as a storage unit. But because of the regulations in the city, he can't do that on his property.
Actually, he, he might be able to ask what I was in, informing him that day. He is in a, a commercial zone district.
And that's what we, looking at this, there, there are some good stuff in the, the, uh, the resolution for cargo containers and, um, did, did you have more to input on that?
One thing I wanted to note of, I, I, I'm listening to your motion here of the things that you would like to bring back.
Well, I'm not gonna motion all those things tonight.
Okay.
I'm, I'm setting forth, uh.
I was gonna mention on the, the signage. So the signage is a component of the development ordinance and so that will be considered by the council with the development ordinance. So we can have that discussion at that time if you would like.
Yes, and I, I, I'm, I, my motion tonight will be over the cargo containers. And if we could have that for a scheduled matters next council meeting. And so that way, uh, my colleagues will have a chance to pull the ordinance if they would like and start studying it now. And then, uh, come council meeting, we can all have input on how to maybe reevaluate how we go about the cargo containers. I'm not trying to create a fire risk or something that, um, you know, in my backyard, a cargo container isn't gonna work. It's just not big enough. But in other people's backyards, it, it may be a good option for them. And so I wanna be able to open that door, uh, cut regulation and, and give that opportunity. Um, that is my motion is to reevaluate the resolution on cargo containers. I guess it would, is it? Yes, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, is it, if there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote. It passes four, one with a absentee vote. Okay, that was a first for me. Four, zero, one with the abstain. Okay, with that, um, the meeting is adjourned, adjourned at 10:28.
I, I have, for, for other matter, I apologize, Mayor. I just wanna make sure everybody is aware. Please join us Thursday morning for the groundbreaking of our community center at 10:00 a.m. It's gonna be a, a great event. It's monumental for our community and we've been really working on this and looking forward to this event for some time.
I apologize, City Manager. Uh, Donnie, do you have any comments on that? This is a big groundbreaking. I missed it.